Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of July 28th at 6:30 PM. We have a call room. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. City Attorney, will you please read the procedures for this meeting?
The city council meeting may be conducted by utilizing communications media technology as provided in Section 120.545B2 Florida statutes without having a quorum of council physically present in the council chambers. In order to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designated seating shall be provided for the public within City Hall. Individual speakers shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with the City of Titusville Resolution Number 162020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easels, props, or other demonstrative aid shall be brought into City Hall. In addition to the regular broadcast of the council meeting via closed-circuit television and live-stream YouTube video, which may be accessed through the city's website, video and audio of the meeting will also be provided within City Hall for the public in attendance. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to city.agenda@Titusville.com or by regular mail to City Council's attention at City Hall, 555 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida 32796. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the senator's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the council members and made a part of the public record prior to any action being taken. Speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19, and any persons exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 will not be permitted to enter City Hall.
City Clerk, please read the procedures for public comment.
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all on-agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you, Clerk. In lieu of an invocation, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, item number four, is Minutes, approval of a special council meeting on July 2nd, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting on July 2nd.
I'll second.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add a couple of items to the agenda, please.
Yes, sir.
Under six, I guess Boards and Commissions, I'd like to add a six C will be titled John Lewis Tribute/Proclamation, and six D on COVID status.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Mayor.
I have a motion.
Could he brief, could Mr. Jordan repeat six D?
Six D was COVID status?
Okay. Sorry.
Repeat the motion once more.
Okay, I'd like to add to Agenda six C, John Lewis Tribute/Proclamation, and six D, COVID status.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, one more?
I don't believe we had a second.
Say again?
I don't believe we had a second.
Thought we did, but, all right, let's start over. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a speaking card.
All those in, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Any, all, it passes unanimously, sorry.
And Mayor, I don't believe you voted on your minutes yet. You had, you had a motion and a second, but you never took a vote.
I thought I did vote.
Nope.
All right, we'll go back to the minutes. Who made the motion?
I think I did, and I think Robert seconded it, or he made the motion and I seconded it.
We got it.
Not real sure there.
We got it, Jolene, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Got one more, I think, but yes, I guess that's everyone. Passes unanimously. Okay.
And Mayor and Council, before we get to the agenda, staff would like to table items nine C and 12 A to August 25th, please.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
I have a motion.
Would you like to table nine C and 12 B, is it?
12 A.
12 A.
12 A.
12 A and nine C to August 20th?
25th.
25th.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
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 Yes, passes unanimously.
And Mayor, as we've done in the past, yes, I think it'd be a little more efficient for you.
I agree, since I started. Okay. Okay, special recognitions and presentations.
Yes, sir, and Council, we are on agenda item 5A, and I will read for the record the letters of appreciation we have received during this month from Community Development, Mr. Steve Adams, Kristen Asbury, David Benninghoff, Darcy Floss, Joseph Gibbons, Tish Hood, Abell Martin, Samantha Osorio, Gary Stavonovich, Rose Marie Coning, and Terry Franklin. From our Fire Department, Douglas Chamberlain Jr., Thomas Duncan, Andrew Johnson, Adam Vulcan, Timothy Bowden, Bowden, William Winert, Daniel Ellis, Lo Cody, Amelia Ramirez, Dana Hershey, Tyler Walker, Stephen Hartzell, Joshua Farner, Jermaine McCoy, Kyle George, and Vincent Maruno. And from our Police Department, Jason Hanson, Mark Jennings, and Matthew Rasmussen.
Thank you, sir. Next item, Boards and Commissions, would you like to read to introduce that item?
Yes, sir. Agenda 6A, the terms of regular members Christian Smith Rodriguez, Public at Large, Thomas A. Taylor, Associate with Building Trades, and alternate member David Menderhoff expire on July 31st, 2020. Regular members Smith Rodriguez and Taylor have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for a two-year term which is set to expire on July 31st, 2022. Alternate member David Manden Menderhoff Mac have expressed his desire and willingness to continue to serve as an alternate member for a two-year term set to expire on July 31st, 2022. He does not wish to be considered as a regular member at this time, and your other alternate member Margaret Van Devon does not wish to be considered as a regular member at this time and remain as an alternate. Currently, there are no other applications on file for your consideration.
Okay. Are there any of those people here that would like to speak? It's not absolutely mandatory or necessary, but if you'd like to, you may. I don't see any hands.
Yeah, I'm here. That's today.
Thank you. Do, discussion from Council, please? Or a motion?
Cards.
Oh, cards?
We have one card. Stan Johnston.
Please come forth, sir.
Stand Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. Before mentioning that is that you maybe overheard I said point of order, and that's out of order for me to say that. But the thing is, is we've had, we've had, this is the, I think it's the third consecutive council meeting, Mr. Jordan has added things to the council, to the agenda. And I believe that I have the right to speak about this decision, and that I didn't, I was not permitted to speak it. So I want the mayor and the Mr. Broome to understand is that I feel like this is out of order.
Council can add items to the agenda by majority vote. You will have the opportunity to speak before any action is taken on those items.
Well, don't I have a right to speak about any, any decisions that are made? That was the decision that was made. Maybe I don't.
No, just like you don't speak as to recreate the agenda, but you have a right to speak on any agenda item before action is taken, a reasonable opportunity to speak under our rules. So since we've added it, if you don't have a card, you can certainly provide a card on those items that are added.
Okay, we've got the cards. Okay, you, she, I gave her a card that represents that, and she was to give, also share that with you, a number-one card. I don't know so that she did or not. Number, upper right-hand corner.
Once the item came up, I was going to let them know you put in a card.
All right. Okay, all right, I'm for this, this, make, make Mr. Taylor and this young lady to continue on that. It's a, it's a special committee that does, it's a tremendous amount of responsibility, and I think that they should understand is that I've been sending emails to council members and city manager and so forth, and I'm not getting responses. So it's, it's an issue that I sent regarding the city's failure to respond and dishonesty and deception. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion from Council? And I'll accept a motion.
I'd move to reappoint Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Menderhoff to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the term that expires on July 31st, 2022, in the same positions that they currently serve in.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from Council?
Just to clarify, is Mander-Mc?
Sir?
It's Mander-Mc. She said Mendo-Hawk or something like that, so it's Mander-Mc.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
His name is Mander-Mc. She said Mando-Hawk.
Oh, okay.
Just clarification.
All right, we have that cleared up?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yeah.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Item 6B is the Titusville Environmental Commission Semiannual Report as written. No action required, just to accept it.
Is there anyone from the TEC that wanted to speak on this? Okay. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the Titusville Environmental Commission Semiannual Written Report.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
There's actually not a. This, this just accepting is not required.
Oh, I'm sorry, no vote, no action required. Sorry about that. Cancel that. I don't know, it's so foggy tonight. Consent agenda, sir. Oppositions and requests?
No, so we're on Member Jordan's item C, a proclamation, I believe, Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before he was the conscience of the U.S. Congress representing metropolitan Atlanta for more than three decades, before he was one of the big six leaders of the American civil rights movement, participating in the 63 March on Washington, even before he was founder of the Southern Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, organizing sitings and marches as a college student in Nashville, John Lewis was a small-town kid from Pike County, Alabama. He grew up on a farm in Troy, Alabama, the son of a sharecropper. A favorite anecdote tells how as a child he dreamed of being a preacher and practiced his craft by offering sermons and services for the family chickens. He traveled on dirt roads to attend classes at a segregated school. On the radio and comic books, the young Lewis would learn about activists like Rosa Park and Martin Luther King Jr. The later, the latter would come to fondly refer to Lewis as the boy from Troy when they began working together as leaders in the civil rights movement. He knew change wasn't impossible to realize, and by the time he was 16, he'd be circulating a petition to desegregate the building. Years later, in 2018, Lewis would return to Troy for the Alabama bicentennial to be honored with a historic marker at the Labyrinth. His oft-repeated mantras to stand up, speak up, and speak out, and to make good trouble resonate and linger. In 2018 commencement address Lewis delivered at Harvard University, he said, "You must lead. You're never too young to lead, you're never too old to lead," and as he himself showed as a young boy from Troy, once preaching to chickens, "You can never lead, you can lead no matter where you come from." Then and now, his life reminds us that the ongoing fight of justice and equality must happen everywhere, and that those who can make an indelible mark on that cause can indeed come from anywhere. I came from a small town in St. Mary's, Georgia, dirt road right in front of the railroad track, a product of segregated elementary schools, segregated hospitals, segregated water fountains, segregated movie theaters, segregated churches, and segregated beaches. And now because of the work of John Lewis, because he made good trouble, I'm sitting on the dais of my city. I own my own business, and I tend a church that welcomes all colors. I can tend any school of higher learning, I can worship where I like, I can drink from any fountain, and I do drink from the fountain of humanity. And with me, as it is with many people of color and white people, we are still struggling for a more perfect union. But it's because of Congressman John Lewis that we still have hope for a better tomorrow for all his people. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we request staff to develop a proclamation for July 17th, the day of his death, John Lewis Day, in the city of Titusville, so that we will never forget the contribution of this great man who gave his life for the benefit of us all.
You may go ahead and ask.
We have one card.
Okay.
Do I make the card first?
Stan Johnston.
Do I make the motion first and then?
You can.
I don't think you need a motion for a proclamation. Mayor can, we can, staff can certainly prepare a proclamation for the mayor's signature.
Okay. As long as you're okay with that.
Okay, all right, we've asked then, right? Okay. So you have.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, and even though it was called for, would have liked to have had it on the agenda. And I'm especially concerned is that the Concerned Citizens has sent information to Council, and the Council has not responded. It's about the Black Lives Matter. It's about the mayor's pledge and asking the city to, to adopt this mayor's pledge that the mayor of Minneapolis and the mayor of Atlanta have adopted. It has to do with excessive police force, and I appreciate what was done at the last meeting, but it was no notification given to the Concerned Citizens who have been handling the Martin Luther King March for many years, over 20 years, and they were never notified of, and they have not, and the city council has not responded to this email and have not contacted the president of, of the Concerned Citizens Group. So I think that's something that should be done, and that anymore, well, there should be some notification. And I, I'm glad that you've, you and Herman Cole and some others have got together with some kind of group, but there was no contact with Concerned Citizens, which is very interested, has been interested not for just a year or two-year, but it goes back for well over 20 years. And it was the, we also, we sent a letter to St. James, and we authorized them to have the parade because we are the ones who have been responsible for it. I say "we" as a member of Concerned Citizens, I'm speaking for them too. So I'm asking the city to, in addition, I think that's great what you're doing with John Lewis. He's a great man, 80 years old, and he's done a wonderful job. I'd like to see that bridge renamed. What do you think? That'd be a good idea. God bless you. Thank you.
Okay.
I believe the next item is Councilmember Jordan's ad of COVID-19 status.
Yes, if, if, thank you, sir. Just wanted to allow the council to know where we are as far as our local hospital is concerned with the coronavirus. And as has been noted in the newspapers and in the news, media, things are not getting better, it's getting worse. And I can personally tell you, owning a charter school, I'm increasingly getting very concerned about sending our kids back to, to school during this time. But just at PMC, Parish Medical Center, we actually have 112 inpatients in the hospital, which is the highest census in the month of July that we've had in over four years. Summers usually are very slow, but because of what's going on with the COVID, we are actually at a very high census rate. Seventeen positive COVID patients are in a negative pressure-isolated room at the hospital at we speak, and that's only the second highest because on Friday, we actually had 20 in a negative pressure-isolation room. Plus, we have 10 patients under investigation for COVID, and there are, people are waiting for their test results, which is among the highest number that we've had for patients waiting for their results. And eight COVID patients are in ICU at this time, and four are on ventilators. The total ICU census is now at 11, and we only have 12 beds. So we are actually looking at opening up more beds if it becomes necessary, but it just shows you the impact of this invisible virus that we have. So, and on top of that, we have many employees at the hospital who are out now with either COVID or whom are practicing self-isolation. Many of these cases are because social behaviors outside of the work, they are not doing what they're supposed to do, and therefore, in a strict accordance with CDC guidelines, our department leaders have developed contingency and crisis staffing plans in the event we need to activate them during the staffing shortage. And that's going to be a pretty sad case when we don't have enough medical workers for those who are coming to our hospital who are sick. But the CDC does have some guidelines to allow people who may have come in contact with others to work in certain areas of the hospital, and we're hoping we'd never have to do that. But when it comes down to workers and people are sick, we certainly have to take care of them. So just wanted the council to know what was going on and to just re-alert everyone that this is a serious situation, and, and we all need to do our part to make sure this doesn't spread any further than what it does. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, for your report. Next item is petitions and requests.
We do have one card.
Sorry? We had a one card?
We didn't receive one card on the side.
Hold the card.
Yeah, we're not voting on it.
Oh, there's no vote on this. There's no decision being made, so you don't need to speak.
Mayor, I would like to add something.
Go right ahead, member.
Mr. Jordan, thank you for bringing this to everyone's attention. I've been somewhat concerned because we only have a certain amount of staff for the patients, and we are getting to the point, I feel, where we are really overworking those staff members. And so I think it's very, very important for the people to understand. And so I think it's very, very important for the people to understand that at some point, that system can break, and they need to consider social distancing and wearing masks and staying home because it's getting to the point that it's scary. I have friends that have COVID. I have friends who have friends, their friends have died, and it's very serious. So periodically, I get this, oh, it's not really serious, nothing's going to happen to me, and I think that's a false hope. We need to stay home. So thank you for bringing it up.
And thank you for your comments. Next item is petitions and requests from the public present. Anyone else wishing to speak, please take that seat over here so you'll be prepared to come up to the podium.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kim Fisher, 1614 White Dove Drive, Winter Springs, Florida. I have a couple of handouts I'm going to send you so that when I talk, it makes a little more sense.
You can give them all to me and I'll pass them on.
I have recently come to find a little issue in the code where it kind of contradicts itself, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. In the R3 zoning, which in the handout I gave you is just one example, throughout the city, there's plenty of these examples, but in the R3 zoning is for multifamily. However, as the picture or the exhibit I gave you, another -- for multifamily, which would be apartments and townhomes, but there's another section in the code that then says townhomes can only be permitted on five acres or more. So in the exhibit I gave you, none of those parcels, the entire block is R3, none of those parcels are five acres or larger. And so in order to encourage homeownership with townhomes versus rental units, I'm going to ask that you give staff an advisability to amend the code so that we can correct this.
Ms. Saka, do you like to comment?
This is a -- Townhomes are permitted in several zoning categories regardless of the minimum lot size. However, in R2 and R3, there's a five-acre minimum. So the idea that what is acceptable in some zoning categories is not necessarily an acceptable another, I think is worthy of a staff review.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, you're first.
Yeah. For some reason, I knew about this, right? Someone told me about it, and I --
I vowed to.
Yeah. I just couldn't remember, and when you brought it up, I appreciate you bringing it up because I actually asked the question, "Why did we do that?" You know? And there really wasn't an answer. I think probably a previous council or something, they didn't want certain things at a certain place. It might have made sense back then, but it doesn't make sense now. So I'm all for them looking at it and seeing what we can do about that, for sure.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Do we need a motion now?
No. No. I think you just need consensus from the other three members there outstanding.
Consensus for advisability, okay. I thought that would be all.
I'm curious.
Comments? Identify yourself, please.
Oh, this is Gail Lynn Nelson. I'm curious, and maybe Ms. Saka can answer this. Why do we feel that townhomes are not appropriate in this spot?
We have done a significant amount of research, and the only thing that I can tell you is that this standard has been in the code for many, many years. It at one point was removed, and then it was put back in, and I believe that it's because townhomes and patio homes were put into the same category, and at some point in the past, the city decided they didn't want patio homes. So it appears to me that patio homes and townhomes were treated in the same way. Other than that, we could find no justification for the minimum lot size.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I would agree, maybe we should relook at this.
Any other council people wish to speak?
This is Sarah. I would just say I agree as well. I think it's worth advisability.
Does anyone else wish to speak, first off?
You got four. I'm good.
That's good.
I guess we have to -- do we have a card on this item? Yes. No card?
It's a petition.
Petitions, but we're not making a decision evening?
You just have consensus.
I can see getting up, so. Okay. You have the permission to do an advisability. Thank you. Next item, please.
Sir, you're still on petitions and requests of the public?
Oh, sorry. I keep trying to move forward here.
I'll be quick. I'm not sure if this should go here because it does kind of relate to something that's coming up.
Name an address for the record, please.
Public Communications Towers. I'm Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street, one of the 12 locally designated historic structures in Tidesville. On the matter of communication towers, recently, the communication tower on the Florida Power and Light Service Center lot at 917 Tropic Street has started emitting high-pitched frequency sounds at intermittent but constant intervals. The sounds are very audible and very irritating as they repeat over and over. This is something new, not something my neighbors and I have only just noticed. In an effort to find out the cause and the possibility to get the noise stopped, I have looked online to find a phone number or a way to contact the service center to no avail. I went there to seek someone to speak with about the noise. The doors and gates were all locked, and no one responded to my knocks or calls out, even though there were people on the lot. I contacted city code enforcement, and they were no help because the noise ordinance says the noise has to be 50 decibels on my property, which it is not. One reason the sounds are so annoying is that they are almost imperceptible at times, like some subliminal signals from outer space. [mimicking sound of a radio].
You did that very well, ma'am.
I listen to it a lot. We residents around this tower would request the city to do something about the noise to make it stop and to include something in the land development regulations to ensure these communication towers do not inflict noise pollution on our properties. [mimicking sound of a radio]. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would any member of staffs like to address that item?
I don't.
No? Okay. It's all right with me. Next person, please.
I'm Mary Murray, and I reside at 1765 Lakeside Drive. On the 9th of July, I had sent in some comments to the council in regard to some of the activities that had happened in regard to George Floyd being from Minnesota. In pondering some thoughts since then, I have gone back and wondered what was different here than in the city I came from. Many people have heard me talk about St. Louis Park, Minnesota, having a lot of similarity to where we are today. What I'm asking the city to look at is adding a racial equality statement to all of our documents. The one that you have there is from St. Louis Park's comprehensive plan. It's just a really good example. I know Peggy's team is doing a lot of demographic work in regard to understanding what the community is as we adjust the upcoming comprehensive plan. But this statement then follows through all of the departments. In my note on the 9th, I made a comment about National Night Out as an example. In St. Louis Park, we had 35 identified neighborhoods. All 35 neighborhoods were attended to in their neighborhood, encouraging everybody to come together and get to know each other. We have one location here, and so I was, as an example, asking for equity across the city on the National Night Out. In St. Louis Park, we had a historic downtown, but we found that it wasn't feasible because of some traffic and parking concerns. We maintained that, but then we went to a city-center approach. In doing so, we added a substation as an example, so policing within the neighborhoods is part of our racial equity. We also included a coffee with a cop and a police academy, which allowed a 10-week course you could take in the evening for citizens across the community to come together to understand all of the challenges and the roles of the police department. By the way, Captain Maui, I really appreciated your presentation. I also talked a little bit about the longest-table concept. Again, how do we get everybody across the community to come together, and Herman Cole's organization or group that's starting to come together, I think, is meeting some of that. St. Louis Park was a little bit different in regard to diversity. It was Christian, Jewish, Muslim, and Unitarian, and yet the whole community came together on common goals on several different occasions. The other comment I had made in my notes on the 9th was in regard to, again, looking at where the money is directed within the city, CRA money, and going to the downtown versus a city center that might be located someplace more central, and then making sure that a racial equity statement was part of the housing authorities. So just something I'd like the city to take a look at and potentially see how it fits into where we're going in the future. Any questions?
Any questions from council? It's all right. No, they're right. Any questions from council?
I'm trying to understand exactly what you're looking for. You're looking for us to do what?
Right now, when I went out and searched all the documents in the community -- I just had my hip replaced, I have nothing better to do. I found there was not a racial equity statement. And that equity statement, in the situation that I came from, was then addressed in each and every component of the city, making sure that there were measurable components that you could come back. But the starting point is one racial equity statement, whether it's in a comp plan, whether it's in a charter, whether it's just a statement the city makes on the website, but acknowledging that that's one of our core values. In the comp plan, we talk about our values, but I haven't been able to find the value statement just yet, but this would be a core value for the city.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I certainly would be interested in us doing something like this.
Would you like to ask staff to proceed?
Yes, please look in this and --
Mr. City Manager?
Okay. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Stan Johnson, eight sixty points at Avenue. I'm here to mention about the elephants in the room, and there are many elephants in this room.
Don't take it personally, anyone. Pardon?
Okay. And so what I have around my neck, something that is indicative of these elephants. The apple represents gravity, like Newton saw an apple, hit him on the head or whatever. And gravity has to do with water flows downhill. And this photo, this photo indicates that this is one of five places where there's six culverts and floodways, five of which are heavily blocked, choked, let's say heavily choked by vegetation. These are floodways. And so what the city has done, the city has completely ignored this. This makes the resilience of the city of Tidesville more susceptible to flooding. It nullifies the flood zones, and it's a bad thing to do. So that's one of the big elephants in the room. This $100 bill represents some additional elephants, and this is the case. The elephant is that the city has claimed that there was a study done by me by independent engineering organization costing $70,000, and I've offered, repeatedly offered, for $100 to anybody to give me a copy of this report, and nobody has so far come forward, and the report doesn't exist. So this is a bad case of dishonesty that has to do with the city manager, even the city attorney, and the mayor, and other people. So this is dishonesty and deception to the public. Deception in this case may result in a big deal. In the case of Baker Subdivision, it was erroneous floodplain that was never corrected for over 30 years, costing residents lots of money. So these two, and this particular, this is the photo, which I've showed you all through this photo, and this particular $100 bill has to do with this, the frog. So I'm asking the city to pay attention and to straighten up and to discontinue the frog, the scams, and to be truthful because this is hurting the city, and it doesn't help anybody to not to be straightforward. This has been going on for almost a year and a half, this issue about this report that doesn't exist, that says that I don't know what I'm doing as a professional engineer. So this, I'm speaking to you as a professional engineer.
The time is up, sir. I have a question for you. Hold that sign up, the first one you held up, please, not that one.
This?
That.
Yes, yeah.
Where is that located?
This is located on the --
In what jurisdiction?
West side of I-95. It's looking toward the St. Johns River.
Is it in the city of Tidesville?
It's a floodway that drains the city of Tidesville.
Is it in the city of Tidesville?
It is not in the city of Tidesville.
Whose jurisdiction is it under? I'm asking you questions, sir. Only answer my questions, please.
I would say that it's under the jurisdiction of the stormwater master plan that says the city of Tidesville is supposed to have that clean.
It's in the county jurisdiction, from what I have.
It is under the jurisdiction because it's a code that the city of Tidesville has adopted and have not followed through. So it is under the jurisdiction of the city.
It's located in the county, however, correct? Correct? I'm asking your question.
It is located in Brevard County.
Have you gone to Brevard County to talk to them about it?
Yes, I have.
And what was the result?
Well, they don't have information from you to proceed. In other words, the city of Tidesville, as far as Mr. Denninghoff says, is that they have not received the stormwater master plan that is supposed to be shared by the city to the county. They haven't done it.
You know, that's the first time I've heard you say that.
Pardon?
In the many times that you brought this up, that's the first time you've said that.
I think I've said that many times. But anyhow, but you didn't get -- it didn't cross your mind.
I suggest you take it up with the county again because if it's their jurisdiction, it's their issue, they should fix it.
Here's what I did. I talked to your engineer, Kevin Cook, and he said he would do it, but I said, "Listen, you got to get approval of the city manager." He never got approval of the city manager to do it. So there's a block right there. In other words, city council is supposed to do it.
You've answered the question I asked. I don't want another diatribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Please respond.
Anyone else on the petitions and requests? I see no one. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. On to consent, council, does any council member want to pull any items between A and H on consent?
I'm sorry.
Any council member want to pull any items of consent?
Anyone on the air would like to do, pull anything on this consent agenda?
Clerk, any cards on consent?
We have one card, the same individual, for all eight items.
With the council's permission, I'll read for the record the consent agenda items A through H. Consent agenda item 8A. Adopt resolution 22/2020 declaring the city council will hold a public meeting to consider vacating, abandoning, and discontinuing certain public rights away on Logan Drive on September 8, 2020 at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers located at 555 South Washington Avenue. Consent agenda item 8B. Approve a budget amendment transferring $388 from fund balance account to city clerk department operating supplies account. Consent agenda item 8C. Approve a contract amendment for additional funds in the amount of $85,000 to Karma Use Lime for the purchase of Quicklime and authorize the city manager to approve the change order to increase the issued purchase orders and acquire the material on an as-needed basis. Consent agenda item 8D. Approve the use of Brevard County Roofing Contracting Services in the amount of $51,820 for various roof repairs and replacements to -- repairs and replacements to Tech Systems Incorporated of Melbourne, Florida. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the award from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for one AeroClave Room Decontamination System and Accessories in the amount of sixteen thousand seventy-eight dollars, and authorize the mayor to accept the grant and authorize the city manager to issue and execute any instruments necessary for the receipt of the grant and purchase the identified equipment as required. Consent agenda item 8F, approve advisability for staff to review and recommend changes to the land development regulations to address communication towers necessary for city operations. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the award of the contract in the amount of ninety-five thousand forty-seven dollars for the purchase of an F-550 utility truck with crane from Duval Ford of Jacksonville, Florida. Additionally, approve a budget amendment in the amount of eleven thousand dollars to provide necessary funding and authorize the city manager, manager to issue the purchase order and necessary for this acquisition. And consent agenda item 8H, uh, accept CRA, CRF grant in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars from the state approved agreement with the Florida House Finance Corporation and authorize the agreement to be executed. And you do have a resolution, of course, you're doing real calls.
Yes, sir. Um, hey, clerk, have, has anyone submitted cards?
Yes.
Card or cards?
We have Stan Johnston, which submitted cards for eight through H. So I'll set the clock for ten minutes.
City Attorney, would you like to, uh, speak to the new rule?
Yes, sir. These are the rules that the clerk read at the beginning of the meeting. With regard to consent agenda, um, each speaker shall be allocated three minutes per item identified and shall address all items at one time, provided, however, that an individual wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to speaking for a total of ten minutes. Regards to the number of items identified, I understand we do have an individual who's put a card on every consent item. Accordingly, uh, that individual will be entitled to speak for ten minutes with regard to the consent agenda.
Clerk, um, how many cards does the individual have?
He has eight.
So all of them?
Yes, sir.
Will you call the individual to the podium, please?
Stan Johnston.
According to the rules that we have at this point, you are allowed four minutes. You can speak on any item on the consent, uh, consent agenda you would like.
Ten minutes.
Sorry?
Ten minutes.
I'm sorry, ten minutes. You have four items, you have, or more, you have ten minutes.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I'll try to stop it, there's thirty seconds here. Stan Johnston, on this first item, uh, you've got power lines in the, in the, in that right of way to be vacated, so you need to reword this petition differently to consider that power line that appears to me. Survey, I can't read. The survey involves one of my property lines, so I'd like to have you have a clear survey. So please stop my, stop now.
You have ten minutes.
Wait.
Did you, did you stop this?
He's confused.
You, you have ten minutes. Do you have any other signs you'd like to bring up instead of tracing back?
Yes, yes, I do.
Well, go get them, bring them at once. Why are you stalling?
Somebody has an open mic up there. Council members? Stan Johnston, eight sixty points, Etta Avenue. I'll try to be quick on this. On the second item, student advisory council, uh, I'm concerned about this, all money items have to do with something that's sixty-five million dollars. Sixty-five million dollars, I've written to you numerous times, two times in July, I believe at least two times in May, and the city doesn't respond. No council members respond. Sixty-five million dollars unfunded liability, OPEB only. So, uh, this is expressed. Mayor Tully said we had a problem. Mayor Johnson used the word bankruptcy. Bridget, Bridget said, we got a problem, and we even had our, uh, auditor come in and say, hey, we got a problem. Thing is, the city is not discussing it at all. This is money, and we've got to discuss it. So, uh, uh, that's considering. So the next item is, is, uh, regarding the Quick Lime, eighty-five thousand dollars, another item. I'm opposed to that because the city is ignoring this particular issue, which I have on this particular drawing, as being fifty-six million dollars, but if we add the other OPEBs, it comes up to sixty-five million. So we've got several emails that the city is ignoring regarding money. So I, I'm opposed to that, to continuing without answering these questions. Roof repairs, uh, city hall, my goodness, how many times are we gonna repair this roof? Seventy-four hundred dollars, fire stations, records, replacement, seven, thirty-five million. I don't see, I don't see enough information there to make a decision. For example, are we gonna replace, we gonna add a metal roof? Or we just gonna go back to something that doesn't last very long? For example, for the, uh, records portion. Uh, these, uh, we've, we've, we've had, we've had problems for years on roofs, and it seems like we just keep paying more and more. The next item, Firehouse Subs. Um, I'm, I'm questioning this because why? Because I've asked you for, and you still don't furnish it, and that is operation and maintenance costs. This may require all kinds of, I'm only going to use the word hidden costs. For example, training of people to use this new equipment. It's not just a, a matter of equipment and so forth that's being donated to us. It's going to be expenses that we should know before we make the decision, and I don't see it. The next item, uh, the public communication towers. Well, I read the agenda packet, and there's nothing in the agenda packet that I see to just, to delineate what the problems are. What are the problems? I'm opposed to just doing that without having, saying what the problems are. Number G, um, that's, it's the same issue, that elephant in the room, sixty-five million dollars unfunded liability, fourteen hundred, that means fourteen hundred dollars for every man, woman, and child is owed by the city of Tidesville that is unfunded. So it's a good point that, that, uh, our mayor used the word bankruptcy. It's a good idea that, that, for example, is that our auditor said, we're in big trouble. It's a bad thing for this council not to respond to anything about this, not to discuss it. It makes no sense at all. And also the newspaper, they don't add it, add anything to it at all. So we have a silence, and it's not good. Oh, okay, next item, relief funds. I'll put nu, I was putting neutral on that, and, and there's no mention about homeless people, whether, whether they would be acceptable for that. So I got, I got a little bit of time left over. The big deal is these elephants in the room, and that Mayor Tully, Mayor Johnson, Bridget Clements, and the more and more associates your auditor said, we've got a problem that we're not addressing. And the question is, is are we gonna be able to, when do you predict that we won't be able to make payroll? That's what happened to Enron. They couldn't make the payroll. Right now, we only owe sixty-five million. If that's, if you, if you, if that's, that's at four percent, let's say it's four percent, that's, that's over two and a half million dollar interest a year if it's four percent. I'm not sure what kind of a deal you have, but you're, you're, you're doing, but, but the thing is, after a while, you know, after so many years, compound interest, you're gonna be up to a billion dollars. So the thing is, is the city is headed toward financial collapse. This, that's what it's saying. And what do you do? You do not even discuss it. City newspaper, don't discuss it. Hometown news, don't discuss it. We're in trouble. We're in trouble, and you won't even talk about it. You won't respond to my emails, closed-door policy, and it figures. It figures because, you know, just like I'm showing this hundred-dollar bill, there's dishonesty, there's deception. That's what you got. This photo right here, this photo says, hey, hey, it asks the question, this photo says, where do you think the water's going? The water's not going in this floodway. It's not going in the floodway. Where do you think it's going? Now, I can tell you one thing, it's going towards Hickory Hills is one place it's going. It's going towards Baker subdivision also. It nullifies, this policy here nullifies the flood zone maps. FEMA, you don't report these things to FEMA. In fact, is, your, your, uh, your, even your planning department denies the resiliency, the lack of resiliency the city of Tidesville has. You're in big trouble. We're in big trouble, and this, uh, this hundred-dollar bill has, again, to do with this same sign. This sign was taken from me on March the 12th by three police officers that removed me from council chambers. They, I had this sign, I had this sign, and I had this drawing that shows, by golly, what's gonna happen? It identifies the five choked floodways, and, and they only, and we got five out of six floodways, and it shows backwater flooding east of I-95. It's what is a, how much area do you think that is that's going backwater to? Over three and a half square miles of the city property. And as a professional engineer, I'm saying to you right now is that this is nonsense, and it nullifies those flood zones, those numbered flood zones in this area. I'm not gonna say the, the A zones, but the A, E zones, it nullifies them. So I think it'd be nice for you to get an engineer that could dispute me, and then so that I could give them, maybe you could get a report. I can give you the hundred dollars. So, uh, what do we got? I got two minutes left. Well, I, I appreciate you letting me, allowing me to speak, and these items, we have not one, but we have many elephants in this room because of deception. And what this deception does, it not only, it's not only against me, but in the case of Baker subdivision, it costs them money. It costs these owners thirty years of flood insurance they shouldn't be paying. We have the same situation. The question is, is what about Parkland Estates? According to information we have approved, it says, hey, they're not in the flood zone. But we have eighty homes that are in the flood zone, although we have calculations that say they're not in the flood zone, and we do not have any calculation to say that they're in the flood zone. Fact is, the city of Tidesville has lost all of their nineteen eighty-nine FEMA map information. They don't have it, except they have some, some, um, topographical drawings that, that should not have even been allowed to, to be given to FEMA because they're inaccurate. But right now, is the city of Tidesville has no calculations for their hundred-year floodplanes for numerous areas in the city of Tidesville, including Parkland Estates.
Mayor, on a board, on a board.
He's still on the clock, please. We're, we're allowing him his ten minutes. You can, if you would like to hold off on that, what I appreciate is, as soon as he gets done, I'll let you speak.
No, I was just pointing out, we're not, we're sort of getting away from the consent agenda, and we're going sort of far afield.
We have tried to approach this thing, as you know, many times over the years, and we have a new system. I'd like to test it out today. We can give him his ten minutes, and otherwise, he would have had, uh, twenty-four minutes. So...
Okay, thank you.
Start his clock.
Okay. Do you want to give me some more time now? She took at least twenty seconds of my time, at least.
No, we didn't.
Pardon?
No, we didn't.
You're not gonna give me the time? Okay, in other words, you made rules, but you're taking the time away from me. See, this is what happens here in the city.
If you give him twenty seconds, please, it'll take more than twenty seconds to argue with you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, so it's understandable that on these issues, the, all these elephants in the room, is that, uh, we've got a problem. In other words, uh, we've got a problem with honesty and, and about, honesty about our finances, and these consent agenda items have numerous, almost all of them have to do with money. And the thing is, is, for example, sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars went to...
The time's up, sir.
Two people here in this room follow the money.
Thank you. I apologize all, to all of you that are here. He has been doing this for a number of years. He makes it sound like it happened last week or the week before. Uh, it started, I think, about six or seven years. I don't think I was mayor at the time. The remarks about us being in bankruptcy, or possibly being in bankruptcy, were valid at that por, portion of the time. Uh, there were things being stunt, done, done on the state level that impacted us. We realized the importance of getting it straightened out. We did. We took necessary, uh, actions to tighten up our, our reins, and we got out of that situation. He's still living in that world, and I can't explain to you why, because we're not in that position. We've explained it to him many, many times. As far as that contract, we have sent him the contract that I was referring to, I don't know how many times, eight or ten times, and he says, this isn't the one I want. Well, it's the only one that we have because it is the contract that we were talking about at that time. Why he does these things, I can't explain it to you. It is a waste of the citizen's time. Uh, I, I don't wanna say unfortunately, because with good reason, uh, we are asked to give everybody the proper time. Uh, he has gone over the proper time by taking cards on every one of the consent agenda items, including, he will do more of them later on, say the same thing over again. Uh, we're limited in what we can do because of free speech, and I apologize for you for that, but we've tried everything at this point. I'll go to, uh, ask for a motion to approve consented items A through H.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8H.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Johnson?
Yes, I thought you said Mr.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Vice Mayor?
Very good, Dan.
Yes?
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is under ordinance to the second reading, public hearing, and related action, item 9A, ordinance number five, 2020, clarifying residency requirement of TEC members serving on PMZ. An ordinance to the city of Tidesville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 31, Article 9, Tidesville Environmental Water Resources Commission by amending Section 31-122, appointment and terms of office. To state that an environmental commission member must be a resident of the city of Tidesville to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, providing for severability, incorporation into the code, and providing for an effective date.
At the June 9th, 2020, city council meeting, city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance clarifying that only members of the Tidesville Environmental Water Resources Commission that are residents of the city of Tidesville may concurrently serve as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The proposed ordinance includes language expressly stating that members of this, of the city of Tidesville Environmental Commission must be residents of the city of Tidesville in order to also serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, sir. City staff, any presentations on this? I see none. Um, council, any, any questions of staff? I hear none. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any cards?
Yes, sir. We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Now, you see what I go through? We all go through.
See what I go through, too?
A lot of time is what you will...
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points, Etta Avenue. I still have him sound the report. I go to the engineer, and they say they, they never did it, and the ma, the dates don't match. But anyhow, on this particular item, uh, this ordinance, it, it appears very redundant. I don't think that, that what we have is unclear, and it's just, uh, uh, I see that it's unnecessary to do this particular one. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Any other cards on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, discussion? I see nine.
I know this seems somewhat redundant, Mayor.
Yes.
But I feel like when we see things that potentially, that have the potential to be... be interpreted in different ways, that we go ahead and act, rather than let somebody five years from now try to figure out what we meant. So, I understand that it is probably overdoing it, but I'd rather overdo it than not overdo it. So, I think that this is an appropriate ordinance change. And I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 5-2020, clarifying the residency requirement of a TEC member serving on PMZ.
Second.
I have an emotion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel? Vice Mayor Diesel? Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Next item is 9B, which is ordinance number 7, 2020, relating to concept plans. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending the Code of Ordinances to set forth the binding nature of a conceptual plan voluntarily submitted during consideration of a future land use amendment, rezoning, or conditional use permit, specifically amending Chapter 34 Procedures, Sections 3422 Required Information Exhibits, 34-39 Submittals, and 34-74 Required Exhibits, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date, and for incorporation into the code.
At their July 8th, 2020, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this action. The proposed ordinance establishes that when an applicant voluntarily submits a concept plan at a public hearing in support of a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, or conditional use permit, the plan will be deemed binding. The intent of the ordinance is to eliminate any confusion that may exist relating to the status of the concept plans. A copy of Section 3.3, 3 of the Development Review Procedures Manual is referenced in the ordinance and is attached in your packet. After additional review, the proposed ordinance has been changed to further clarify the intent. These changes are highlighted in your packet, and again, this Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval and have been notified of these proposed changes.
City staff, do you have a presentation or comments?
Only if you have questions.
City council, any questions or staff? I hear none. I will open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, we have one.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Sett Avenue. I may be wrong. I read the agenda packet, and I know that, that Planning had, Peggy Bisaka and Planning had said that she was, this item that has been withdrawn 14 years, butland survey requirements was a problem. And I thought she also said that the concept plan was a problem. Maybe she didn't, but that's why I put in there, I questioned that, so I'm asking again, does that meet requirements? Is Planning going along with this in this particular Peggy Bisaka? So, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Any other cards, clerk?
No, sir.
Any further discussion from, I'll close the public hearing. Council discussion, any further council discussion?
I would, I'm for it, because people come before us with concept plans, and they're that implies this is what it's going to look like, this is what it's gonna be, you know, please vote for it, everybody gets excited, and this basically says, if you're, if you're going to give us a concept plan and sit there and say, this is what I'm building, then that's what you should build. So, I'm very much in favor of that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 7, 2020, relating to concept plans.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think that was the vice mayor that went split second faster. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Mayor, next item begins quasi-judicial. At this time, I'll read the proceedings associated with quasi-judicial. During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the side of the council chambers. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council staff, representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the council, sign an oath card. If there is anyone present who has not yet signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
No.
No.
No. No.
Thank you.
The applicant of Bard County is requesting a conditional use permit for storage or use of regulated substance in a quantity greater than five gallons in the area of critical concern, nor to replace an existing underground fuel storage tank with a new above-ground storage tank at 7, or correction, 2675 Flake Road. The current storage tank was installed in 1989 within a 500-foot setback from the active water supply well. The proposed replacement for the existing two 12,000-gallon underground storage tanks is one 20,000 double-walled above-ground tank, which will be outside of the Florida Department of Environmental Regulations requiring a 500-foot setback, but within the city's 750-foot setback. The staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit. The wellfield operating permit will be approved by staff upon the CUP conditions being approved by council, and both the Titusville Environmental Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this action, recommended approval of this action.
Thank you, sir. City staff, Ms. Bisaka?
I just want, excuse me, to draw your attention to the staff report in which the staff reviews all of the criteria for the conditional use permit that's contained within the hazardous waste technical manual, and finds that it is consistent with these requirements. The staff feels that this is an improvement over the current situation and recommends approval. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from council? I see and hear none. Thank you, ma'am. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes, we have two cards. We have Christine Valier, and then Stan Johnston.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Christine Valier, Assistant County Attorney, 2725 Judge Fran Jameson Way Valera. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. As Ms. Bisaka stated, the Titusville Environmental Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as staff, has thoroughly reviewed this item and recommended approval. The county is doing this as preventative maintenance. I wanted to make the council aware that there are no current leaks at the existing site, there is no FDEP enforcement action. This is the last in the conversion to state-of-the-art above-ground technology of all the county's fuel storage facilities throughout the entire county. I provided additional information for you to look at, so you can see, this map here shows the, the yellow line is from Titusville well 24 to the location of the new above-ground storage tanks, and that will be approximately 550 feet away from the potable water well. I also provided to you specifications of the new above-ground storage tanks that will provide enhanced containment if there is a leak and enhanced leak detection. And this is the newest, latest, greatest above-ground storage tank technology that we are happy to provide in this area. Also, I provided information from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of additional above-ground storage tanks for fuel storage within a mile of this location at three additional locations in the area, including the Arthur Dunn Airport, as well as two city facilities. I have here county staff and a county consultant to answer any questions that you may have, and I respectfully request support and approval of the conditional use permit.
Any questions, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. Where's the existing tanks now? I know they're underground, so based on this map here, where is it?
They are closer to the well. If you, if you see this area here, there's about three light brown areas, they're in that area.
Oh, okay. That's actually further away than you put it in.
Right, we're locating the new tanks further to the east, so it'll provide greater protection in the area of critical concern.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I do want to make a comment for the record. Everything I read says this is an improvement and a better situation. There has been, for years, leaking of tanks underground. Nobody knows about it until years later, and then the ground has to be mitigated. Very expensive for everyone, actually, so I'm certainly in favor of it. But with that, next card, please.
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Sett Avenue. I'm coming to you as a resident and also as a professional engineer. I want you to be reminded of the gasoline spill we had over at the police station, and how many millions of dollars that that cost us. I'm not sure, it was a horrible, it's a horrible amount of money that it cost us. And I think, I read through this, and I didn't see it, but it appears to me that the county should be responsible for oils, for, you know, whether there's any fuel spillages and the cleanup, and that could be a tremendous amount. So, I didn't see it in there. I read the engineering certification, which is incomplete. It requires the, not only the name and the seal, but it requires the address and the phone number of your registered engineer, so that's not, that's not, you know, that violates code, state statutes. So, that needs to be taken care of. And I think the city should be looking at, I want to say it's back in 1985, 86, is when they brought on this area of critical concern, is that there was not supposed to be any, it wasn't, my recollection, it wasn't the distance from the wellfield, it was anything within the area of critical concern. So, if you read this agenda packet, you'll notice, please pay, please pay particular attention that the wording of it says that no permit was found for this underground tanks that were installed in 1989. That's a big deal. So, I would believe that the city has not followed up as far as being protective of our wellfield. In other words, I would say that the city is negligent if they don't know whether they've got permits for these serious possibilities. My, it's my understanding, I believe that one gallon of diesel fuel will pollute 1 million gallons of water. One part per million is something that is completely, will take the taste, will destroy the good water taste. Diesel fuel is horrible. It don't taste good at all. So, you may consider doing other things. You may consider driving, digging an area and find out what kind of spills might be in the area of the existing water tanks and in those, in that particular area. I think it'd be worth your while, and it'll worth your while to add a responsibility for cleanup if it happens, because like I said, is the case of the police department over there on, okay.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
As the applicant, ma'am, you may have rebuttal time?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate that the county's application included an emergency contingency plan that was prepared by one of the county's professional engineers with the solid waste department, who has experience in DEP regulation of hazardous materials. He has coordinated with the Titusville Fire Department regarding their response capabilities in the event of a catastrophic emergency, and that would involve the participation of the county and the Canaveral Port Authority to respond to a catastrophic event. Otherwise, the county is prepared to address the situation, and will have trained staff to address the situation, and will allow the city access to the site in order to inspect the fuel tanks and make sure that they are comfortable with the operations that are to be put in place.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. I'll close the public hearing. Hearing, council discussion, please. I hear none. Accept the motion.
I just moved to approve conditional use permit, application number 1-2020, Revard County Central Police Service Fuel Tank Upgrade on Flake Road.
Second.
I'm sorry, you say second?
Second, yes.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Next item, we're on 9E, and this is an application for utility easement. The application was submitted by the property owner of 5778 Chesire Drive, Mr. James Captain, is requesting vacation of a portion of a public utility and drainage easement in order to accommodate a pool with enclosure in the rear yard. There are no objections from staff or the utility provider. At the planning and zoning meeting on July 27, or 22nd, sorry, they recommended approval unanimously. Staff, again, has no objections, and we request that you approve this vacation, as well as the associated resolution 23-2020.
Ms. Bisaka?
Only if you have questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you, ma'am. I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Are there any cards on this item?
We have no cards.
Quick. I will close the public hearing. Council discussion? I hear none. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we vacate public utility and drainage easement, application number 1-2020, on 5778 Chesire Drive.
And I'll need you also to approve the resolution 23-2020.
And approve resolution number 23-2020. Thank you, Mr. Senator.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Vice Mayor won't again.
He's quick.
He is.
My TV's faster.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
On to item 9F. An application was submitted by the property owners of 2545 Christopher Drive, Chris and Susan Fegan, requesting a vacation of a portion of the public utility- Susan Fegan, requesting a vacation of a portion of the public utility drainage easement in order to accommodate a proposed screen enclosure. There's been no objections received from staff or any of the utility providers. Staff has no objections to request the vacation of a five-foot portion of the 25-foot public utility drainage on property located at 2545 Christopher Drive, and approve the resolution 24-2020. And the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this at their 22nd of July meeting.
Ms. Fasaka.
Only if you have questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, any questions of staff? I hear none. Open the public hearing. Are there any cards on this item?
No cards. No cards.
I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move that we approve vacation request, public utility and drainage easement, vacation application number 2-2020, 2545 Christopher Drive, and approve the associated resolution number 24-2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You got it that time.
I need to be faster than him every now and then.
Now and then? Okay, that's good. And roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Next item is item 12B. The city manager's proposed general fund budget for FY 2021 is balanced by applying a millage rate of 7.2145 mils. This request is to set a tentative operating millage rate higher than the allowed flexible, to allow flexibility throughout the budget hearing process. Staff is requesting that you set a tentative operating millage rate for the FY 2021 budget of 7.9360 mils, which is 10% above the rolled-back rate of 7.2145 mils. Also, set the vote debt service millage rate for the riverfront acquisition referendum at .3147 mils. The maximum levied, authorized by the Series 2005 General Obligation Bonds is .5930. And Bridget is here to answer any questions that you may have on this as we begin the budget process for 2020.
Before she does, I'd like to make a comment for the public. It shows us, it shows the council has, I won't say the opportunity, will raise it 10%. We do that every year that this comes up, so that if there are items that we do want to put in, we will have opportunity to do it. Typically, we reduce it sometimes to nothing, that 10%, sometimes somewhere in between, but it's not necessarily going to be the full 10%. A lot of people think we're just arbitrarily raising it. We're not doing that. With that, yes, ma'am, you had a presentation or comments, or just from the council?
Questions.
Any questions from the council? I'll open the public hearing. Any cards on this item?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I read the agenda packet on this, and there's an inter-office memo dated July 19, 2020, from our finance director, Bridget Clements. And so, it's appropriate that I make a correction, that was what was said earlier. And that was said by, let me, is that, that my knowledge of this problem, of OPEB being a serious issue, did not come about until March 12, 2020. I haven't been talking about this for any long periods, the OPEB issue. I've had some questions on it, but now we got a serious, in other words, this is the first time that I know that our finance director said, "We've got a problem." At that meeting of March 12, no one discussed it. She just blurted it out, saying, "Hey, we got a problem with OPEB, no amount, no details, no questions." It wasn't until April 28 that your auditor gave it a figures, and the figures came up to $65 million. So, I have questions about the reporting of our financial situation, the reporting of this item, operating millage, so forth. I have questions about what is going on with the truthfulness of our financial situation and our financial status, because it's inconsistent to say that we were balancing our budget, and at the same time, we have $65 million owed, unfunded liability. It doesn't, it doesn't match. It doesn't fit. So, the city should discuss it. The newspaper should say something about it. Council members should say something about it. So, I question anything that's coming from the finance department, and this particular item does have something coming from the finance department. So, thank you for letting me talk. And so long the money, 1400 dollars, and 65 men divided by the population of our state, I mean, of the city, comes up to $1400 for every man, woman, and child, baby. Thank you.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make on this?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other cards on this item?
Yes.
I'll close the public hearing. Any council discussion? I hear none. Ask for a motion, please.
I'd move to approve the proposed tentative operating millage of 7.9360 mils, and the proposed tentative vote of debt service millage at .3147 mils.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
Next item is, well, on item C. During the meeting at their July 15, 2020 meeting, the TEC unanimously voted 5-0 to recommend the council televise or record the TEC meetings and then publish online for public review. Member Tucker abstained from the vote. According to TEC Chairman Majak, the TEC is seeking to increase public education and participation in the process. The FY 2021 proposed budget has been published, but the request would be added if council chooses to do it to the unfunded budget of items, which currently exist at $14 million. And you know the staff that we currently have, they're here at all of your meetings, they're here at several board meetings, as well as they're in the public whenever a public official's out there. They also do the Titusville talking points and do social media, so there's not much room right now for adding additional televised meetings, but we feel that recording the meetings is appropriate.
Ms. Fasaka, any comments? Any questions from council from Ms. Fasaka?
Ms. Fasaka? I just have a couple of questions as far as if we did do that, then you're talking about manpower, which means you have to pay them overtime?
No, sir, I'd have to hire somebody. We're already paying overtime now.
Okay. And with the audio, how do you get access to that?
A clerk can report it in the meetings.
I mean, how does a public member get access?
They can ask for it.
Just ask for it? And how do they get that on?
It'll be on a disk.
On a disk? Oh, okay. All right. So, it sounds like to me at this time, this would be something desirable to do, but we just don't have the manpower or the budget to do it at this time, correct? And we've never televised the TEC?
No, sir.
Correct. Okay. I thought I read something where TEC is not meeting every month. Is that right?
TEC meets monthly. Yes, sir.
They do? Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
May I just, just a comment?
One at a time.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Dan. I would love to see us record the environmental commission and broadcast it, because I think people are interested in what we're doing to protect the environment. They are interested in the environment, they're interested in our river, they're interested, we have a large amount of people interested in birding. So, I think it's something that, that at some point, I would like to see us do. However, I understand the city manager's concern, especially now with the COVID and everything else, trying to hire additional personnel. So, at this point, I would ask that we consider putting a link to the recording on the city's homepage, so that I would be interested in hearing what they're saying, and I could go to it, and I could at least listen to the meetings and find out what they're doing. But I think right now, actually, hiring additional personnel is going to be a stretch.
Would anybody like to second that for discussion?
I'll say.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with that. Am I good?
I think.
Yes, sir, of course.
I think Reverend, Reverend, Reverend.
Yeah.
You've been doing a lot of fundraising lately. I think Member Jordan had the second, hold on, everybody. Member Jordan had the second now discussion. Vice Mayor, I think you were first. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah. I didn't know that was a motion. I thought she just was saying, "I'd like to see this." But that being said, back to city manager, explain the difference between recording and showing it perhaps at a later date, not being live, and having someone there to do it live. Is there a difference in expense?
Absolutely. Right now, currently in our booth, we have two gentlemen that are running the television operation. In order to record, the actual clerk or staff member that is functioning with that board can do the recording, and then we can turn it over to put it on whatever media we want, as well as publish the minutes, and that's part of our responsibility now.
So, I'd like to see if we could possibly move in that direction where it's recorded, and then we can play it later, which is done quite often with other meetings in the central Florida area, and go from there. And then, look at the unfunded aspect of things in our budget hearings to see if it reaches that level of funding. I'm not saying it will, I'm not saying it won't, but I certainly would agree with you, based on the information you've given, that we can't just step up and fund it if we don't have the funding right now, and we can look at the unfunded aspect in the budget, but if we can record it and we're okay funding-wise, that might be a nice compromise.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from council wish to speak? I'm hearing anybody, I'll make my comments. I agree with, I think everybody has spoken at this point and said, "We can't do that live on the air. That requires a lot of technical knowledge and would require us to hire, probably requires to hire an additional person." But I think if we record it, we can, we can put it on air at a particular time after...
Now, when we're talking recording, we're recording the voice. We're not recording, because to visually record requires the same manpower.
Okay. But we still can make, we can make a recording of it, then, correct?
Yes, sir. And it's, just to put it in perspective, that's exactly what we do at all of our workshops, to include your budget workshops. We don't, we don't video record, we record the meeting itself or the workshop, and then...
Yeah, I'm not sure why I thought that this particular one was a little bit different, but I understand it now. And would that be available to the public, or?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Be available to anybody who requested it? Okay. Again, I think I was a little bit off on what I was thinking, but the way I just stated it, I'd be very much in favor of it, so with that, I'll close the, oh, have we asked for cards yet?
We have one card. It's Tony Shifalo.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street. The city of Titusville is rolling out a new improved website in August, and boasts of a YouTube channel with over 1,000 subscribers. It claims to show informational videos on all sorts of city services, council meetings, and announcements. It is to the benefit of the citizens of Titusville to have access to all city council, commissions, and board meetings on the YouTube video channel. Especially in this time of social distancing, we citizens need all city meetings to be available online. TEC's request to have their meetings recorded and televised should be granted, as the work they do to save, protect, and enhance the environment is essential to the physical and the economic well-being of our citizenry. And I understand that it costs more to have someone there personally to, I worked in television, I know how it goes, but it seems to me that even a stationary camera on a meeting would be more beneficial to the public, because nobody listens to the radio anymore. Thank you.
Well, just for clarification, it would go on a disk, I assume, and that disk would be available for anybody who would want to, want to hear it.
That works for people like me, who are really concerned and involved, but for the average citizen who doesn't really have time for anything more than a few soundbites, it's more compelling to have a picture. And the aim of TEC is to educate the public about what's going on with the environment. And when you can drive down US 1 with your air conditioner on and smell the river, we need to have everybody involved in improving the environment, especially in this area of the North Lagoon.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, I advocate television, but that's because I worked in TVs, though.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close the public hearing, council discussion. I hear none.
I love Tony's idea. I just don't think it's feasible right now. Maybe as we go through his budget, we might find additional money, maybe not, but I think that's the time to look at it. But I do want to make sure that whatever audio recording we put out is very easy to find for the citizens.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing anything? I'll ask for a motion.
Yeah, well, this was just advisability, right?
It is a direction, but I think I've got the consensus of what the staff, yeah.
Consensus? Has everybody agreed to what was just presented?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. You have your instructions.
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
Next is petitions and requests from the public.
You're on item D at this point. Several private schools have contacted the city regarding approval to expand temporary classroom capacity due to CDC guidelines for conducting classes in person. Our current code provisions do not readily lend themselves to quickly responding to changing needs of schools. Therefore, staff would like to develop procedures in order to address these issues during the declared COVID-19 emergency. Staff requesting council approve advisability for staff to develop an ordinance to address the needs for additional temporary classroom capacity of private schools during the COVID-19 emergency.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Fasaka? I have to ask.
I just wanted to let you know that this is along the lines of the staff is thinking. We can't waive Florida Building Code, the ADA, or the fire code, but what we can do is to make the site approval process much quicker, so that schools who have been talking to us about starting somewhere between April 10 and April 24.
to us about starting somewhere between April 10th and April 24th can hopefully relocate these modular buildings on current impervious surface.
Let me correct you, it's August, not...
Thank you, is that what, I said April?
You said April, yeah.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Apparently, all A words are the same to me tonight. So that's what we'd like to do and we plan to move quickly if we're given advisability so that we can assist these schools as quickly as possible.
Okay, before I forget to mention it, we did receive several emails today and these will be given to the city clerk and she will make them part of the public record, so if anybody wishes to read them, they can do that. I assume all the council members received their copies. If you didn't, please let me know now. I guess everybody did. If you'll pass those down to the...
And mayor, those emails were on items throughout the agenda, that's just not on this particular item, yes?
Well, most of them were. Okay. Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I'm in agreement that we need to put something together for these schools because we're in a really weird situation right here. And one of the things I can, of course, think about is if we do temporary buildings, if we go by the ordinance, there needs to be bathrooms. And if you don't have the right ordinance in place, then you could be doing something illegal. We do have learning colleges and I know the school board can do things differently than, you know, what the city can do, so I'm all in favor for us, looking at something that is going to help our educational system out.
Thank you, sir.
I would agree with Robert. I would agree with Robert. We need to do something to allow the kids to return to education on at least the safest basis we can find.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just add to that, and I agree with Member Jordan as well. And when I first saw this, I told city manager that, you know, wow, I think that was really well thought out to be ahead of the curve on that because with all we've got going on with trying to get kids back in school, I truly hadn't thought of the private school issue, and I think it's a tremendous thought and my hat's off to the staff for that.
All right. Anyone else?
We do have one card.
Okay, call the card, please.
Pastor Tom Porter.
Sir, if you would come forward and state your name and address.
Yes, sir, Tom Porter, 3460 Trevino Circle.
Good to see you, Pastor. I didn't recognize you behind the mask before.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, we're one of the public, private schools that are looking for portable, to put two portables in, 24 foot by 44. I met with the, with Parrish and Steve and all the people there, Ashley, and met with him last week and they said that you all might have some concessions for us for that parking lot's not going to be an issue, the stripie's not going to be an issue, we passed that, so, and we understand fire will not, fire will have to take care of and, but we just have two buildings. We've already located them, but I'm not buying them until we are permitted, you know, it's just, and they're four miles from our church on US-1.
Yes, sir, I know the people well. Ms. Busaka, do you have any interaction on this as to?
I have called the school board to ask if these are considered mobile homes, mobile structures, or modular structures. They're considered modular structures, according to what I understand and the information that Pastor Porter provided us. I think that we can move quickly to develop an ordinance. I, we may have to ask for a special meeting to move quickly enough to assist them, I don't know if his date is still August the 10th or not.
No, it's, that's, we're going with the, with the public school boards, yes, ma'am.
But all of the staff that needed to be in that meeting has been in the meeting and he, I believe, understands what limitations he has and I think we can accomplish this, we'll just have to move quickly, but I feel real positive about being able to assist this situation.
Well, and I certainly would like to see that happen. My experience goes back a lot of years, but it would seem it's the same situation, that these would be portable and movable and the school board does that now, I believe, so I don't think it's a big switch.
Yeah, these buildings were built, excuse me, these buildings were built for the Orange County School System, right? And I've got the drawings for them and I've submitted them to Steve Adams, looking for more clarity on the drawings, but they're not a mobile home or something like that, they were built for Orange County Public School Systems, yes, sir.
Well, from what I hear here, everybody seems to be on, on...
We appreciate it.
On the same side for this and it's just a matter of staff getting it done and there are technicalities to do that, as you stated when you came in, so.
Yes, sir, understand.
We will attempt to do it as efficiently as we can. Thank you, sir, appreciate your...
Mr. Mayor, I just want, and you are absolutely right, I'm a little concerned because time moves really fast and when we're talking about an ordinance, I heard what you said, we may have to have a special meeting or something, I think that's what's going to happen, but the number one thing to me is that we can educate our kids, so we want to make sure that we do everything we possibly can to accommodate what they have to do and those are learning colleges, I would tell you. So, you know, school board is one thing, but when you're talking about private, I know there are some weird things that go on and you talk about putting them in a parking lot and all of this stuff, so, you know, I'm all for whatever we need to do to accommodate our kids, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. Are there, are there any more cards?
Yes.
Okay. Close the public hearing, council discussion on this item. Any further discussion? I hear none, I'll accept the motion.
Motion, Mr. Mayor, I move that we ask staff to develop an ordinance to address the need for additional temporary classroom capacity of private schools during the COVID-19 emergency.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have.
Whoops, wait a minute, yes.
I have. Mayor, I do have questions. Do we need a motion for this, since this advisability?
Ms. Busaka?
I think I have heard staff direction, but...
Yeah, and the other thing, we can do an emergency ordinance that won't require two public hearings, as I understand it, with a four out of five votes, a supermajority to approve that, so that may help streamline it. So if I could get council's desire to go through a two-public hearing process or an emergency ordinance process, I think we can accomplish the timeliness that the pastor's asking for.
I would have no problem with that. Any other comments?
No, of course, during these times, you need to consider how many council members will be available to vote because it takes a supermajority to pass an emergency ordinance. The other thing in the statute is, emergency ordinances cannot be enacted which amends the actual zoning map of a parcel or parcels of land, or that changes the actual list of permitted, conditional, or prohibited uses in a zoning category. So I believe the direction you're giving to staff is, you would like this to come back to you as soon as legally possible.
Correct.
If it can be an emergency ordinance that meets this criteria, understanding the direction is you would like that. If it doesn't, you would like to have that special meeting in order to accomplish it as expediently as possible, if that's my understanding.
Ms. Busaka, understood?
Agreed.
Thank you. Anyone else comment? I don't hear any.
So you don't need a motion?
Yes, I do.
What you're saying, okay. He said no.
Okay. That's all for that item, next item, where are we here?
Okay. Yeah, we have a consensus, I think we have a consensus from those that are on the air as well.
Are there any objections to this, so we're going on consensus? I hear none.
No, Mr. Mayor, agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to 12E, which is Brooks Landing subdivision Sketch Plats. Brooks Landing is a proposed 143-lot subdivision on approximately 71.99 acres located north of JJ Road and west of Hammock Road. At the, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on July 27, 22nd, I'm sorry, I said that twice tonight, they approved the Sketch Plat with three conditions, and I'll read the conditions for your consideration. First condition is require clarification of stormwater plan to determine the amount of drainage into the Indian River Lagoon with the requirement to lessen or prevent drainage into the Indian River Lagoon, or a clarification that there is no impact to the Indian River Lagoon with the current stormwater management proposal. Second, require more open space, a minimum of 20 feet of clear pathway around each pond, surrounding the ponds recreationally, including items such as walking trail and native vegetation plants, both trees and shrubbery. The code requires 10% natural planting preserve in the area, could be located within that 20-foot clear pathway around each pond, and the same could be counted towards the native vegetation plantings. And third, require the developer to provide proof of the required protections of protected animal species to the furthest extent possible, abiding by state regulations, and the motion passed for two. Ms. Busaka's available to answer any questions that you may have on staff's recommendation to approve the Sketch Plat for Brooks Landing subdivision.
Ms. Busaka, I know you have comments on this one.
Yes, sir, I do. I wanted to provide some more information that perhaps would inform your discussion as you go through the conditions recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board. The first one regarding the stormwater plan, we ask the city's development engineer to provide us more detailed information, and I will read part of that to you. The legal positive downfall for Brooks Landing drainage system are the wetlands on the property. There is no direct discharge that's identified as going into the Indian River Lagoon in an untreated form. In order to fully retain all stormwater on the site, the design of the ponds would have to be based upon a 100-year, 24-hour storm event. This would result in significant increase in the footprint of the stormwater ponds. However, due to the fact that there are wetlands present on the site that the applicant is allowed to drain into, the 100-year, 24-hour retention of stormwater scenario is not required by the code. There are two parts to stormwater impact, water quality and water quantity. The city's code requires a project to meet the St. John's River Water Management District minimum standards, and let me provide a little bit more information about that St. John's. The St. John's permitting requirements looks at the differential of the pre-development conditions versus the post-development conditions. Based on the state classification of the final receiving water bodies and other factors, the pre versus post requirement that is applicable may either be an 80% reduction in pollutant loadings, post versus pre. In other words, 80% less will be going in, off of the site and into the receiving water bodies than it's currently going into, and the nutrient, the pollutants that are reviewed are nitrogen, total nitrogen, total phosphate, total suspended solids, biochemical oxygen demand, and heavy metals. Or the other applicant, the other potential is that post-development pollutant loadings will be less than or equal to the pre-development process. So that's required by the St. John's as part of their review. The second item that was brought up is the discussion of open space, and I wanted to provide you with a reminder of what the code says, and this is section 3163-3F, planned development. Common open space includes both passive recreation, for example, picnic areas or walking trails, and active recreation, playgrounds or basketball court areas. Private water bodies and stormwater retention or detention areas that are designed to be used for passive recreation, improved with fountains, benches, and walkways, may be counted toward the common open space minimum requirement. So that is part of the code, and the third item relates to requiring the developer to provide proof of the required protection of protected species. Chapter 163.0335 states, "For any development permit application filed with the municipality after July 1, 2012, a municipality may not require as a condition of processing or issuing a development permit or development order that any applicant obtain a permit or approval from any state or federal agency unless the agency has issued a final agency action that denies the federal or state permit before the municipal action on the local development permit." Chapter 163.3164 defines development permit as a zoning permit, a subdivision approval, rezoning variance, and special exception, or other official action of the local government having the effect of permitting the development of land. So I clarified, I checked the permitting status with both the Water Management District, the FDEP, and the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission for any type of wildlife permits or other permits, including environmental resource permits and stormwater permits. There have been no permits that have been denied on this piece of property. In addition to that, any, and I'm reading this from a site plan approval that we have recently issued, Condition 16 says, "Issuance of this permit in no way waives the permitting requirements of other local, state, or federal agencies, including but not limited to St. John's River Water Management District, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Department of Transportation, Army Corps of Engineers, and Brevard County." If there, I have lots more paper here and I'm happy to read a lot of it to you, but I will stand ready for questions.
Any questions?
I have a couple, for sure.
All right, ahead.
Thank you, sir. All right, just going down the requirement, first of all, I see these three conditions and the first question I have to ask you is, what were the conditions based on? Because what you're reading goes opposite of what the conditions being asked.
Hey, turn your mic, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I am making an assumption here, there, but there was some discussion of requirements for the rezoning reviews, and that portion of the code talks about all, well, I've got several pieces of paper. The discussion of the rezoning, I think some of the zoning conditions are some that were reviewed by the P&amp;Z. What I'm reading to you is kind of the next step in the process. The Sketch Plat requirements are actually shown here on the sheet, your agenda sheet. So when I looked at the discussion and the information that was provided, I think that some of that was taken from the actual requirements for the rezoning. What I did was to look at the requirements for what is included within Chapter 30, which are the development standards. So I think that's why there's a little bit of a difference, because they looked at a different part of the code. The second thing that when we were asked, the staff asked, why was there a request for the 20 feet? I think that the consideration was that the open space, the discussion was at P&amp;Z that they didn't feel comfortable that the retention areas would be included. The code does state, as I read to you, that the private water bodies and stormwater retention that include fountains, benches, and walkways may be counted, but we have not had a lot of discussion about that at the city council meeting. So the P&amp;Z looked at it a little bit differently, I think it's somewhat in the eyes of the beholder. I also know that during the discussion, there was some information brought up that stated that the site plan does, the Sketch Plat does not comply with the purpose and intent of being a development of superior quality with improved levels of amenity and improved living environment. I believe that, again, that's something that is determined by the people reviewing it, and the staff really did not have any comments on that. I do believe that, well, let me put it this way, right now, there are currently, there are five-foot concrete sidewalks and there is a jogging... are five-foot concrete sidewalks, and there is a jogging trail. The jogging trail is shown as five feet. Typically, the standard is closer to eight feet and can be up to 12 feet for a jogging trail, so I think that that may have been a concern of planning and zoning. In addition to that, I think that planning and zoning fundamentally felt that a pavilion or a fountain and benches was not really active open space. I've provided you the direction that staff has under the code. I will tell you that we believe that if the applicant wants to, that there are opportunities here to improve the amenities that are being provided. And so we feel that there is an opportunity to either provide direction to the applicant this evening, or to tell the applicant to come back and work on that if that's the desire of the council. When it comes to the issue about the developer provides proof of required protection of protected species, I believe that they reviewed the environmental report that was provided by the applicant. And that environmental report does say that there is a potential for the gopher tortoise habitat, and I believe that they looked at that and said, because there's the potential, we would like to see additional information. I don't know if they were made aware of the state statute, but that's the one I've read to you tonight.
Okay, that was a long answer.
That's a long question.
Yeah, all right, so what I'm trying to understand, so if I'm looking at the conditions on Item 1, as far as the drainage is concerned, I think I heard you say that there is no direct discharge into the Indian River.
That is correct, but eventually, there will be a discharge into the Indian River of treated water, because that is the outflow for everything east of about Dixie Highway.
So there really is no way to stop the drainage eventually going into the Indian River, even if it's being drained from a pond and then it's eventually going to go out there, right?
Every development has to have some kind of outflow, even if you were to say that you're going to create a development that could handle a 100-year storm. If you get two of those in a row, like I think it was Fay, we saw flooding everywhere, and so there has to be somewhere for that water to go. So eventually, in my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, but from what I understand, there has to always be a positive outflow, and that is required as part of the sketch plat.
Okay, and as far as the, I see there's a minimum 20 feet of clear pathway, that is just something that, where did the number come from?
We asked, and the answer that we got was that it just seemed right. And so my suggestion is, if you want to go with a number that's bigger than five feet, we have trails that are eight feet, and we have trails that are 12 feet, and both of those are defensible numbers in my mind.
But there's no requirement for the developer to go to 20 feet, or his requirement is the minimum of five feet, is that correct? Can we say that?
Yes, that's a minimum sidewalk.
Okay, and then you answered the last one about the animals, and there may be a question about that one, it sounds like. Am I correct? There may be a question about the gopher tortoise.
It is possible, yes, sir. According to the, I think it was Atlantic Environmental that did the preliminary.
Yeah, Atlantic, yeah, we have it here.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, thank you.
I'm going to jump in here myself. The other day, we had a discussion, you and I, about the, what amenities could be put there to make it a recreational area. I'm not sure if that's the term you used, but did you make any progress on that as to, I mean, it seemed to be like a bench was the starting point, and...
And that is what the code says. It says that improved with fountains, benches, and walkways may be counted toward the common open space minimum requirement. It also talks about the fact that active recreation, such as playgrounds or basketball courts, are encouraged. And as, when this item came through as the rezoning, I'm sorry, it wasn't a rezoning, it was a change to the master plan and a small-scale amendment, there was some discussion by council as to what open space was, and that you provided advisability at that time for staff to move forward to develop an ordinance, talking about a better definition of active and passive open space. We're working on that. I'm sorry, I don't have a date for when the ordinance will be ready.
Okay, but you are, you are working on that.
Yes, sir, we are.
Wait a second. We had also talked about if facilities of those types that you mentioned, if they're available close by, and I think they are in this case.
Yes, I think that the...
That should be a consideration.
Well, I think that the location of the large park to the south chain of lakes is something that council could take into consideration in deciding what's the appropriate type of open space that should be utilized. For instance, my example would be asking an additional soccer field in this development. It seems as if that's pretty available to the future users in this development, but you may see other types of activities or open space that's not readily available that would be appropriate in this area.
Okay, well, we're working on it. The second item that I got through today, one of the letters I received, it's from a person that appears to be connected with the Marine Resources Council. On his ending, he gives his name, and he says Chair Intergovernmental Committee. Do you happen to know who that person is, or?
No, sir, I didn't receive...
I didn't give you the name, so it'd be really hard for you.
I didn't receive a copy of it.
Okay, you might, if you can figure it out, but it's the only thing I can conclude is with Marine Resources Council. But he made, I don't know, some interesting statements, and it's kind of confusing. One sentence says, "State admits that current land-used regs and permitting requirements are not effective in controlling stormwater from new development or redevelopment." And then it says, basically, that the cities, or implies anyway, it is apparent, and to me, that saying apparently, which to me isn't conclusive, that local governments have authority to require detailed stormwater management plans, plans. And what I get out of that, and I think I read it somewhere else too, is whose rules are we under? Are we under state's rules, or do we have some sort of mandate to do other things?
We have both, we have local reviews, and we have the Water Management District.
And who takes precedence?
Well, the more restrictive applies, and so...
Wow.
And we are often more restrictive than the Water Management District, because we don't really allow wet ponds where they do, but it's, they, an engineer typically goes through the Water Management District first and then comes to the city, because some cities are, basically, they just say whatever the Water Management District says is fine. We do our own review, and our engineer actually models the plans when they get in to confirm that that model is correct and that those calculations are correct. And then we superimpose any of the more restrictive regulations on them.
And there are some more restrictive?
Yes, sir, we are more restrictive in a couple of ways. You're going to ask me one more question, and my limit of expertise is going to run out, just so you know.
I'll stop here.
Thank you.
And anyway, my point is that I don't understand how a system like that works, where either the city or the state can take precedent over the other one. That's, and I'm not asking you for an answer, I'm just telling you that it's very curious in my position. I can't figure it out from what I've seen here. There are a lot of, several nice people who have written different things, but none of them seem to be educated in the things where it's talking about. One gentleman has a master's degree and a doctorate, I think he said, no, no, I'm sorry, it was a regular bachelor's degree and a master's degree in electrical engineering, but I don't see where that applies. So some of the things that were put forth on people for and against, really, are kind of strange. I don't know if you read them all, but if you haven't, I'm giving them to the clerk, so you can take a look through and see what your estimation is on it. Okay, someone else, please? Members of council want to speak? Go right ahead.
Yes, sir. I, I've sort of got a problem with this, and I would like to see him do additional work. When I was talking to Peggy and Scott and Richard the other day, there is an overlay showing the trees on top of the proposed subdivision. And my understanding is code says that the developer is supposed to work to make sure that these trees, that we save, saved some trees. There's a couple in there, there's a lot in there that are over 20 inches, and they're oaks, so they are probably 30 years old. My glasses don't allow me to see well enough. I thought there was one in there that said 50. It may have said it was 30 inches, which would make it a fairly old tree. So before we approve this, I would like to see him lay this out and let us know what trees he's saving. I don't want the, to be in a situation where he goes to staff and says, well, I'm just going to cut down all the trees and mitigate everything. The second thing that I wanted to see was that the trail be increased in size and width to either eight to 12 feet, because that just seems like a very narrow trail. And I'd also like to see the engineer, and what he says about stormwater and water problems, I don't know, I don't know enough to say this is a good plan or not, but I would like to see that, I'd like to see some more information on that. And I'd also like to see his environmental report recommended a gopher tortoise survey, and I'd like to see it. I'd like more information, and I think the developer needs to work with staff a little bit more before we get to a sketch plat approval. So those are all my desires there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Wait one second.
I want to ask a question.
Yes.
Member Nelson kind of broke up a little bit. Was she asking for more information on the stormwater plan?
Member Nelson, did you hear that?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize, Peggy, because part of the time you were breaking up.
Breaking up is easy to do.
I'm sorry you missed it, it was brilliant.
Which one of us is brilliant, or is it both of us?
Anyone else wish to speak on the subject?
I had a question.
Ms. Busaka, go ahead, go ahead, Sarah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I just, I was going through all the emails that we received from citizens, and somebody had mentioned the low-impact design practices. I was just wondering if you could kind of clarify this particular development that's happening alongside some of the best practices that are happening with low-impact design? If you think it's kind of consistent, do you think there's room for improvement? Just if you had any thoughts on that.
I haven't seen enough to be able to answer that question. There's not, I have, there's not really full engineering that, that has been provided, but I can tell you that there are, Track B is a common open space, and it's an existing wetland to be preserved. There's a track in the most upper right-hand corner, which would be the northeast, that's an existing wetland to be preserved. My understanding is that things like rain barrels are part of LID, but that certain, I'm not sure that that would be reviewed at this stage. Also, there's a, for instance, swales are part of LID, but I don't know how Public Works feels about the idea of swales. We have some communities where swales are not functioning very well, and I've heard that discussion. If you would like me to have someone much more knowledgeable about LID review this, there may be enough information for them to provide you with some information. I'm sorry, I don't have any more to tell you than that.
Oh, no, that's fine, thank you for that. I apologize, because I just passed on to that question. But yes, I would be interested in potentially get to a better, more informed decision.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, yes, thank you. Ms. Busaka, you had said, and I think we're going back to Member Jordan's questioning about water going into the Indian River Lagoon, and you had said, first, no, but at some point, water would be going into the lagoon, but it would be treated. I guess the question then is, is there a certain amount that is acceptable to go into the lagoon, and how much will be going into the lagoon, and what does the effect of the ramifications of that water going into the lagoon have on the lagoon?
According to the information that was provided to me by the city development engineer, on the natural state, there are approximately 13 million gallons per year going into the lagoon. I can't tell you what the pollutant loadings are, but those are considered as part of this development process. It says the pollutant loadings for the pre-development condition are calculated using this runoff volume, and those pollutants are, as I mentioned before, total nitrogen, total phosphate, total suspended solids, biochemical oxygen demand, and heavy metals. Based on the project proposal presented, it's estimated the site will generate a runoff volume of approximately 87 acre-feet per year. This is equivalent to 28 million gallons per year for the developed site. Now, that is, two things you need to know when you're looking at pre-development and post-development runoff. There are two parts of that. One is how much is running off, and the second is the rate at which there, it is running off. These are, the requirements are that post, there be no net increase as compared to the existing conditions on the site in the amount of nutrients and the pollutants discharging from the site. We also require the retention of the 10-year, 24-hour storm, which is the most common storm and is likely to happen once every 10 years, as opposed to the 100-year storm, likely to happen once every 100-year storm. There is, we also, that both the Water Management District and the city require that the rate of runoff from the site is equivalent in pre- and post-conditions. So there will be additional runoff, because there's additional impervious surface anytime you develop, and the issue is that there will be no net increase in the rate, that is cubic feet per second, and no increase in the peak discharge rate.
How will we know what the chemical makeup is of the water going in? Is there regular testing of that water going in? Obviously, what we don't want to do is lose the progress that we've made on the Indian River Lagoon, and I know we're on that same page, I'm just kind of asking that question.
You're getting into Mayor Johnson's territory of me not being able to answer this 100%, but I'll tell you what I believe. I don't believe that there is water quality monitoring of the discharge necessarily. I believe what the Water Management District does is to look at how the ponds are functioning, and the assumption is that if the ponds are functioning as designed, then the pollutant loading is less than the current, less or equivalent to the current pollutants that are being discharged from the site in the pre-development site. Now, if there's, I don't see any engineers, so if this is going to be tabled or continued, I can... I can certainly get a better answer to that question, but I think that's true.
And that's good, and I appreciate that. And again, I'm throwing these things out there like I even have a clue, and I don't, and my concern is who regulates? We don't want to get caught up in a situation where we did this, we did that, lagoon's heading the right direction, and then we have a development. And I'm all for making up, letting them, getting them to go forward and do the right things. But when I hear about water going into the lagoon, especially at some of the rates you spoke of, we've just got to make sure that it's, you know, regulated, monitored, or somehow we know what it is.
And I think that's part of my concern, I mean, outside of the trees. I know the Marine Resource Council is checking the water quality of the lagoon on a regular basis. And what I was hearing from them, and I haven't asked them in a couple months, but our water quality was going down, so I wasn't sure if that was seasonal or what. But again, we don't want to do anything that's going to negatively impact the lagoon.
If I could.
That's a tough question.
Hang on. Go ahead, Ms. Busaka.
I'm good, Ms. Busaka, thank you.
Okay. If I could, I think that what they look at is the classification of the water, and in this case, the water on the eastern, western side of the river is a Class II, the water on the western, I'm sorry, the east, is a Class III, the water on the eastern side is a Class II. But I believe that they then use standards based on whether it's, the receiving body is a Class II or a Class III. And that's what the, that's what the engineer said, because he said, "Based on the state classification of the final receiving water body." So what they try to do is maintain that state Class II classification. I can't tell you at any given moment that the current water classic, that the current water, the water currently meets those standards, but I believe that the intent is that if not, it would be, it would be raised to that standard, as opposed to, do you see the difference between what the water quality is today and what the standard is? If the standard is higher than the current water quality, my understanding is that the standard is what is being used to determine if the stormwater facility is, or the stormwater system is adequately engineered.
I'm going to jump in again. It appears that that's, that number keeps moving and changing, and that's the problem I'm having, that there doesn't seem to be a final source on it. Now, I understand, you understand what I'm saying? Okay. Parts, a few times it was mentioned, including by the gentleman that is, chairs the Intergovernmental Committee, that he basically takes the state and says, the state admits that current land use regs and permitting requirements are not effective in controlling stormwater from the new development or redevelopment. Who is effective? Maybe it's engineers, and I'm hearing what you're saying. I understand you're not an engineer in that area. Perhaps we do need someone else to look at it from outside, because it's very confusing to me that you have two sides on it, and they're both saying the same thing, but they're both saying it for a different reason.
I was, Kevin Cook recently told us that DEP, was it DEP or St. John's?
DEP.
DEP was looking at the stormwater standards, and that they would, they're, Kevin was going to go to some seminars to learn about the evolving standards. I was told by an engineer within the last three months that St. John's is now looking at higher standards. But as I understand it from Kevin, that is based upon, again, the receiving water bodies. And so they may look at St. John's, and they may look at the Indian River Lagoon and say, "This is an imperiled waterway," and those standards would go up. Currently, those are not in place, but I understand that they are moving forward, except, well, I should say, some of those are in place that St. John's has put in place, and I understand that DEP is now putting some in place. So I think that we're talking about what's current and what may be coming in the future.
Well, we are, and I'm trying to figure out how a developer can deal with that, because what is true today may not be true tomorrow. And so how does he plan for the ponds when he's not even sure what he's looking for?
Well, like with all things, when you make an application, you can work with the requirements at the time that that application was in place. That's what deadlines are about, or grandfathering. And so they come in, they work with what they've got, and then maybe the next phase, they'll have to do something different because the engineering standards may have changed.
But up to that point, they can deal with the present standards, even though those standards seem to be shifting back and forth.
Yes, sir. Once your application is in, then you're typically allowed to operate under the requirements of that application.
And just one other comment. I mean, some of the things I, I just were amazed, the same individual asked that whoever the reader is, "Go to the next page and look at the B map." Sorry. And I did that, I went to the next page and looked at the B map. The only problem is, he gave me the B map for the Banana River Lagoon B map. So I'm not sure what went on there, maybe it was just an error on his part, but it seems he wasn't paying much attention. So I, that troubles me too. And this is somebody who says he represents a particular organization. Anyway, it was disheartening to see the variances in different opinions and so forth, and for a developer to have to work that. But if, if we can make a decision at a certain point in time and it will hold, I guess that's what the builder needs to know, so. Anyone else wish to torture Ms. Busaka again anymore? Nobody does, how about that? So I'll close the public hearing.
No, we never.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
The applicant hasn't spoken yet.
Yes, I skipped over there a little bit, but I went to open public hearing. Clerk, we have cards on this?
Yes. We have two cards. Kim Rosanka is the first one.
Please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Kim Rosanka of the Law Firm of Kentwell and Goldman here on behalf of AG Ventures LLC. Chad Janoni couldn't be here tonight, he's actually out of town. I have papers as well, and there's no room up here for papers anymore. I don't know if this mic is live.
Sure, it is live, you can sit there, absolutely.
Thank you. And I'm trying to abide by your mass coordinates, but it's difficult.
While you're speaking, you're fine, you're not near anyone, so.
Great, thank you. All right. All right. Again, Kim Rosanka here on behalf of AG Ventures LLC. I'm here to ask that you approve the sketch plan as presented without the conditions. You may remember, this was a very long hearing back in June, June 11th of 2019, I was here. I think I had 15 people in my notes that spoke against this, including Dave Bott, the man that referenced in the email. He is from Marine Resource Council, and he did speak with you, and he speaks at every public hearing I'm at, from one end of the county to the other. The Marine Resource Council does have an intention of protecting the lagoon, but their science is a little bit different than the engineers that I've dealt with, and as you can see that as well. What is interesting is this is an old orange grove, and every engineer I've talked to that said, "Development with retention is going to be better for the environment than leaving the old orange grove as it is." So I've heard that in engineers I've worked with and through other meetings I've been at. To begin with, these conditions, to me, would be more, had been more appropriate in the PD ordinance you passed, 24-2019, back in June of 2019. There were many conditions in that exhibit attached, it's in your agenda packet, and it was a very long, drawn-out, I think we had two or three city council meetings, and this was almost a negotiation as to what would be allowed. He changed the plan several times throughout the course of four or five months. So we are going to ask that you approve the sketch plan, and I'm not familiar with your ordinance as you are, I've not done a sketch plan, I thought this was like a site plan, but this isn't even as detailed as a site plan, because a site plan requires full engineering as well. And here, there has been engineering during the last year, and in fact, the engineering has resulted in what you have here today, and has relied upon what you approved in June of 2019. So there has been engineering, but it's not full engineering. And your sketch plan just requires a number of things to be provided. One thing it does require is that it meets the open space, common open space. The PD ordinance that passed last year said it had to have a certain percentage of open space, and that was 26.09 acres of open space. There's been more provided here. There was nothing in particular about how big the walkways had to be, how big the plantings had to be. There was nothing in this ordinance that specified, nor do I see anything in 34-152 that requires that. These are amenities that are usually up to the developer to provide, the developer designs the subdivision, and if I'm missing something in your code, I apologize, it may be in your development review procedures manual, I'm not sure. But this was almost a ministerial act, it's like, it has to meet the ordinance, and he has to provide these things, and he did provide them, and your staff report says they're all included. And the open space was a certain requirement, and he met the open space, and he put them where it fit within his development, within the confines of where you guys said the lots are supposed to be. So he's had a, had a binding site plan back in June of 2012, that he worked with his, with his engineers to come up with this sketch plat. And it's a very, it's, I think, 20 pages of a sketch plat. So there has been some reliance upon what was done last year, and the engineer has worked on that. It's been working on this for a year, in fact. Regarding the stormwater, our engineer has stated that the design of the stormwater system will be required to be reviewed by the city of Titusville, St. John's River Water Management District, and Brevard County as JJ Road right-of-way permit is required. During the permit review, a review of the design will encompass confirmation, the project will provide proper treatment of runoff, including assuring post-development annual nutrient discharges do not exceed pre-development discharge. And that is Steve Muller, the engineer of record. And what I have seen is the engineer has to do massive amounts of calculations and then give it to St. John's, and they review those. I had this recently with Squid Lips and Cocoa Beach, that the calculations weren't proper, and Brevard County made them do them all again. So your staff, Brevard County, St. John's, will make sure that runoff is proper and that it meets the code required at the time that this application has started. So as to conditions one and three, we do not believe that they're required, because that's part of what happens. The developer is going to have to do something with gopher turtles if they're there. I'm, I think that's in your comprehensive plan, I know there's many things in your comprehensive plan that says has to happen at site plan. In fact, there's one. Maintenance and conservation of trees and native vegetation within the city through the continued maintenance of trees within city properties and through the site plan review process for new development. That's in your Conservation Element 1.2.1. So I would submit that your tree maintenance is during the plating process or the rest of this, the site plan process, not at the sketch plan. As to condition two, there was no indication that AG Ventures would have to do more than five feet, because all he had to do was make the common open space, which he has done, he's actually provided 37.7% common open space, more acreage than required by the PD ordinance from last year. The sidewalk was requested by the city. I don't know if the sidewalk, if they told him what size to do it or not, but he did it on five feet, it was engineered at five feet, it fit into the plan that was approved last year, so that, and I talked with Mr. Janoni, he's not in any position to agree to more than that, because he spoke with the engineer, and the engineer says it's going to be very difficult to make it bigger because of whatever you have to do with a stabilized sidewalk, with a concrete sidewalk. So he is not prepared to accept condition number two. And I just would state that this, this sketch plan before you was based upon the master plan you approved in June of 2019, and it does meet open space, your open space requirements are not very stringent, as Ms. Busaka stated. And open space, this is 33-8A2E of your code, which I believe she's already read, that says, "Open space shall provide for quality recreational amenities, including fountains and passive recreational amenities such as benches and lighting." Again, if the developer builds it and no one buys it because the buyers don't like it, that's the buyers' and developers' decision as to what the amenities we're requiring. There's a very large park, as you've mentioned, you have many recreation activities in Titusville. And this is what Mr. Janoni has put forward through AG Ventures LLC. We would ask that you approve it as presented without conditions. If you do think conditions are necessary, or if you need more engineering information, I would ask that you table this, because I have no authority to do anything other than not accept the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Yeah, I thought your last statement was a little funny.
I have no authority.
I just can't accept. All right. Peggy, what's the, what's the reason for a sketch plat versus a sketch plan?
I'm not sure there is a difference, I just think it's different wording. If you're asking why we do a sketch plat, a preliminary plat, and a final plat, that's a different question. But if you're asking the difference between a sketch plan and a sketch plat, I think that's been used tonight kind of interchangeably.
But there was a master plan.
Yes, there's a master plan.
That was approved.
We have site plans, which is equivalent to a preliminary plat in the subdivision world. We have concept plans, which are required for conditional use permits, so we have lots of plans and plats.
What's the rationale for us having a sketch plat?
I'm going to ask Mr. Broome to help me, because he was here when that change occurred, I think.
I don't know.
A little history, before sketch plat, you had preliminary plat, final plat. Preliminary plat was full engineering and had a lot of detailed information, and when that was reviewed by your plan of zoning and council, and you wanted to have changes, you would hear from the applicant, "That's difficult at this stage, because we've already invested all our money in engineering." So they said, "Great, we'd like to look at that at an earlier stage when we can make comments before all the money is invested in the engineering." And so a sketch plat process was developed, which does not require the same engineering and information you have of a preliminary plat, it's more at a higher level. So as you see here, a sketch plat does require location, you know, of streets, roads, your boundaries, your acreage, your parcel numbers, site data, including parcel size, classification, lands to be dedicated to the public, proposed easements, rights of way, all of your existing site characteristics, including general information on the conditions, wooded areas, location of major trees, utilities, ditch, swales, wetlands, water bodies, lots and street layout, number of lots proposed, layout of water, sewer, stormwater systems. So there's a lot of information that is included at this stage, but it's more of a general characteristic. When you get to preliminary plat, you're going to have a lot of your engineering done. So this sets the stage for the developer to move forward and do his engineering to create that preliminary plat. So this is your opportunity to look at the sketch plat, what's proposed, and apply this to the master plan, because he's going to take your approval tonight and move forward and begin to do his engineering and create his preliminary plat for his development.
But even if he creates the engineering plan, he still is subject to whatever requirements that may come out after it is presented to planning. Is that correct?
As he develops his preliminary plat, he will have to build it according to all the regulations and codes.
Well, that's what I'm getting.
This is your opportunity to look at some of those things. One of the discussions was open space.
Right.
Well, open space, as you heard from Ms. Busaka, our code, when dealing with open space, is just not open space, it's the certain passive and active recreational amenities.
Right, yeah.
So what council has to decide is whether or not the space set aside in the sketch plat as open space, you're satisfied it meets that criteria to count as open space. As stated, I believe by Mr. Rosanka, I'll speak for us, there was a requirement of a certain percentage as part of the code and master plan to be set aside as open space. Now, you need to determine based on the sketch plat that was presented to you, does that qualify as open space under the PD zoning ordinance, based on our definition of open space? And that's what I believe this condition by PMZ about require more open space, I believe was their interpretation, that what is set aside currently is open space in their- was their interpretation, that what is set aside currently is open space, and their opinion does not meet the code requirement of open space. And they'd like to see additional active or passive recreation provided to meet that standard.
See, that's what I'm a little confused about, because if I heard right, you'd say, what was your percentage of open space that was required versus what you did?
Right. Well, actually, I did, I gave you both. What happened is the PD ordinance from 2019 required 26.09 acres.
Right, right.
And we have provided 27.12, or 37.7, I believe 35% was required.
If I could, I'll give you one example. Tract E is a 2.11-acre pond. It includes a pavilion and a fountain. I believe that P&amp;Z felt like the entire pond should not be included, the entire 2.11 acres, but only the area that actually has the pavilion on it, which is much smaller than 2.11 acres. So I think that that's the gist of, one of their concerns, is that it didn't seem right to them that the entirety of Track G, which is 3.99 acres, which is water and benches and a jogging trail, they should only include the area dedicated to the jogging trail, not the water.
But it's all about passive area.
Yes, and, yes, and that's where the language of the code says that private water bodies and stormwater retention or detention areas that are designed to be used for passive recreation, which includes improved with fountains, benches, and walkways, may be counted toward the open space. P&amp;Z's perspective is that may, in this instance, should be not. They should only include the area actually dedicated to the retention. I think that's the crux of the issue that council is stuck grappling with.
Well, I'm not grappling with it, to be honest with you. But it's just, to me, it's pretty black and white. I think we get into the logistics of using may or shall and all this good stuff, but if I'm a developer, I see the word may. If it's beneficial to me, then I'm going to use it, right? Because I'm trying to spend as little, less money than something that requires me to do something else. And of course, if I can't use the whole acreage of the water, and you only want me to use this small acreage, then I'm going to have to find some other place, which means now I'm going to, my return on investment is going to start, it's going to be lowered, because I can't use all the space that I have to do what I need to do. So you're right, it is subjective if you want to say, "I don't want to use it," but when you've got a code that says it may be used, then to me, that gives the developer license to do it. It didn't say you could not use it. It says you can use it, so that's a positive to me, that tells me that I have permission to use that space to be calculated until the requirement that you have given me. To go the other way, to me, is going against the rules that I'm trying to play with. Doesn't that make sense?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. So the only one that I really have a concern about, one and two, I understand what you're saying, but there is a requirement for us to, our developer, to find out where the gopher tortoises are and, what's those birds?
Scrub jays.
Of course, the scrub jays are. So if there is scrub jays or gopher tortoises in the facility, you have to do some kind of mitigation. Move them someplace or what? Not build there at all, right?
In my other projects, that's usually regulated by DEP. But if you need that condition there, he's going to take care of the gopher turtles and protect species. It's, that's what.
Right, he has to.
He has to. So if that needs to be in here somewhere, that, I'm sure, is fine. It just, to me, it's incumbent upon the developer, and it's required by other codes outside of your code.
Well, that's why I was going to get to the point. If you heard me, I had a problem with that. But I don't have a problem with developer, because the developer has to do this, because there's requirements to do it. It's not like, they're looking for proof, and the proof is actually you have to have some type of documentation that says, "I found 20 gopher tortoises, and I'm going to mitigate by moving them someplace else." There is going to be documentation. So that is the proof that they are looking for. So I don't have a problem with them asking for it, but I think it is a requirement that you need to have anyhow. So to me, it's kind of a redundant requirement in this, at this point, in my mind.
Yes, sir, thank you. Exactly, yes, correct. I agree with you, wholeheartedly.
Well, of course you agree. All right, the minimum 20 feet, and it sounds like to me that's just a wish. If you've got five feet of space, and I think I just heard, I think you said, that the developer is saying, "We're going to, it's going to be hard pressed to do the five feet, but there's a requirement, I'm going to do the five feet."
He can do the five feet, he can't do more. The engineer said today.
Yeah, the arbitrary thing, and that's why I asked the question, where did 20 feet come from? You know, why not 40 feet or 50 feet, if that's the case? So, you know, it's very difficult, especially these days, you know, when we're dealing with developers who actually want to develop in Titusville, the worst thing we possibly can do is put things in place that are not required. I understand that. I also understand that P&amp;Z is trying to protect, but we have to make sure that there is a nexus, if you will, of the stuff that we're doing here. And to me, the first one, as far as the drainage is concerned, I think Peggy explained that pretty well. The second one was the 20 feet. To me, it was kind of arbitrary. Five feet is fine in my mind. If you can do a little more, then that's fine, too, but your requirement is five feet, and just to put an arbitrary 20 feet on there, to me, is, you just can't justify that, just by saying, "That's because, that's what I want." That just doesn't make any sense to me. And the last one, it's going to be there anyhow, because of the requirements for gopher tortoises and any kind of species that are in danger, you've got to take care of those things, or you won't be able to build, for sure. So I'm good with not having these things in here. I did hear a member, Nelson, talk something about trees and talked about the size of trees. Is there a challenge there that I'm missing with the trees?
If I could, Member Jordan, the code says that we are supposed to save, Peggy can say it better than I can, but basically that we are, the developer is to work with staff to preserve what trees we can. And that's not exactly how, what it says, but that is basically it. My understanding of the sketch plat is that if we approve it, this is the last time we see it. So we can put in there, he has to work with staff to save trees, that may or may not happen. Might be easier for him to pay $100 per tree and just cut the whole place. And I would hate to see that, because some of those trees are 30-plus years old. And I would hate to see somebody come in and say, "It's easier for me to get rid of it than save it." So I think we need to consider that.
Anything else? Sure, you still have the floor.
Oh, thanks. All right, so Peggy, if you can answer that, as far as the trees is concerned, what's the requirement?
Well, the requirement is of that nebulous that's, that the developer will work with staff to protect the most trees they can. I've done a very quick count, and it appears to me that of the approximately 60 20-inch trees and larger that are depicted on this tree survey, that approximately 1/3 of them are going to be within areas that say that it's currently going to be preserved, and about 2/3 of them are either on lots, in streets, or may not be able to be saved due to their presence right there on the stormwater ponds. This is what I don't know. I don't know how many of these trees are viable trees. I don't know what condition any of them are in, if they're, I don't know that. I can, I'm only telling you that they exist on this tree survey, but I don't know any conditions. So that information would, may be available somewhere. I could not find it anywhere in the information that we have in the city.
But as far as the developer working with the city staff, when it comes down to preserving trees, is that a requirement, or is that just a hope they will do it?
The truth of the matter is that with that language, it's very difficult if a developer says, "Well, I can't do this because my arborist says that once I fill the lot," or that "my arborist says that it's diseased." Now, we go out and look at that, because we do have an arborist on site. But I believe that on these small lots, that once you fill those lots, those, in most cases, those trees will be gone. I looked at some of the minutes that, on the previous several meetings in which this occurred, and actually at the planning and zoning, Mr. Genoni made a comment, and I can read it to you, that had to do with the trees. Mr. Severs asked what adjustments were made to the plan to preserve the trees. Mr. Genoni said they might have moved the road, and he said that on the edges of the lots, they could use tree wells to preserve the trees. So that was the minutes and the discussion that occurred at P&amp;Z. So I see that there are maybe five, six of these larger trees that are on the edges of lots in which those tree wells may be able to be used. So now we're looking at maybe 25 out of the 60 that would be preserved.
Did Mr. Genoni actually approach you and try to figure out a way to preserve some of these trees? Or is this, has he ever approached you about it?
Well, he's, this is not what I do every day, so I would be unlikely that I would actually have this conversation. And typically, these conversations happen at the requirement for the preliminary plat rather than at the sketch plat. However, as we've noted before, you wouldn't have the opportunity to see that. I'll just read you one other piece of information that, Chairman Severs asked, "Where on the plan does it show there's 10% of native vegetation and trees are being preserved?" Mr. Parrish asked Mr. Genoni what this property was used for in the past. Mr. Genoni said it was used as an orange grove. Mr. Parrish asked what the vegetation existed on the property now. Mr. Genoni said there are some burned-up trees and a lot of pepper trees. Mr. Genoni said there's a lot of invasive vegetation on the property. Mr. Parrish asked what happens to the orange groves, and Secretary Spidel says she believes the orange groves died in the freeze of 1981. So the trees are probably between 30 and 40 years, if indeed the orange groves died in the early 80s, and now we're at 2020. Those are about the age of those trees. And I can ask staff what kind of discussions they had at sketch plat, but that would not be typical, because we require, as the preliminary plat, to actually list every tree that's going to be removed and the reason for the removal. We also say that a reason for removing a tree is if it is in the buildable area of a lot. So once these lots have been shown and approved, then they will be able to be removed if it's in the buildable envelope.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to recognize myself again. First, I disagree with you that you're paying any attention at all to the profitability of the builder. That's his business. I feel that our business is making sure that we treat him fairly and by the rules. Whether he makes money or not, that's his area. We shouldn't make anything, we shouldn't make any decisions based on his profitability. I disagree with that. I do agree with everything else you said about, about the, you know, I think you agree with me, that we have to treat him fairly. And I think that tonight has convinced me, we're not sure of that, and we don't have all the answers. And I think Ms. Rosanka made a suggestion that makes sense, since if we go one way or another, it could be Katy Bar the Door situation, that everything is going to go wrong. I think we need to table this, frankly, and give Ms. Busaka time to look at those trees and where they're going, and come back with some answers, whether all of the present ordinances and, which seem to be somewhat flexible with the state and the city, are being met. And I know that's going to be a hard thing to do, and you may need additional expertise, Ms. Busaka. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Yes, it will definitely take a lot more people than me, for sure.
Well, and if it has to be done, it has to be done, because if we do it for this one, we have to make sure that we at least have the information to do it for the next one. So I'm going to leave it to, well, the other members of council. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
I would agree with you. I would like to have some more answers before I try to either approve or disapprove of sketch plat.
Okay. Do we have other cards?
Yes, we have one more.
I would agree as well.
Thank you, both of you. Name and address, please.
Tolu Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street. I haven't moved, but I stand before you now as a member of the Titusville Tree Team to endorse the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission concerning this Brooks Landing subdivision. And I feel, as does the Planning and Zoning and other members of the Tree Team, that the approval of the sketch plat should be given only when the three requirements of the P&amp;Z are included. And I have been to the P&amp;Z meetings and heard the discussion. It's not an arbitrary, "Oh, let's make it 20 feet, because five feet isn't enough." I haven't been privy to looking at the particular section in the sketch plat that they were referring to, but it was a five-foot concrete sidewalk leading up to a bench on the edge of a retention pond. And P&amp;Z felt that that was not a sufficient open space and couldn't be called a particular amenity. I feel that in addition to the gravity of the possible runoff of ground, and the groundwater impact of this development on the Indian River Lagoon, the clear cutting of all but 10% of the extant vegetation on this property, on the 72-acre parcel of land so near the lagoon, it will have a negative impact on the overall environment in Titusville for years. I tried to get a larger picture for you to see, but in this week's Titusville talking points, there's a nice little aerial of this place, and you can see, it's not just a bunch of dead orange trees. There, I drove out there today and drove by the property, and there are a significant number of large hardwood trees, a number of the sable palms, which are the state tree of Florida, and a lot of other types of vegetation as well. I understand that a developer has to make clearings to put in road and infrastructure and then build houses, but I feel that the requirement number two about the open space is essential to the approval of this development, because requiring the developer to create a park-like atmosphere surrounding the stormwater pond is not only ecologically sound, but aesthetically pleasing to prospective customers, clients, people who buy the houses, who want to live in the community. Requiring the recommendations of the P&amp;Z Commission to be met will also bring this projected development closer in line with the direction City Council has asked staff to move on, saving the Titusville tree canopy, in part by disallowing clear cutting of this project site, whether it's clear cutting a development in its entirety, leaving just 10% of the extant vegetation, or each lot. May I have one more?
Ma'am, I'm afraid your time is up. I didn't hear the last thing you said, ma'am.
I said, "May I have time to finish my last sentence?"
A minute?
Yes. Any step City Council can take.
We have to have a vote on it, ma'am.
I'll move.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion, I have a second.
Wake up, people.
Somebody, somebody, are you there?
Stop!
That's a second. All, any, any further discussion?
Could I just?
Did you say you have further discussion? Okay. Ma'am, I, I appreciate your pin, your opinion on it. We're just trying to give you extra time here.
I just, I just want to finish the one little paragraph.
We, we have to give you the time. You're not giving me the time to give you the time.
Vice Mayor Diesel? Did he say yes?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Member Stokel?
Yeah.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yeah.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Ma'am, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that any steps that City Council can take towards improving the ecological environment of our city is a step in the correct direction. Beginning eco-friendly projects even before city ordinances are changed to move developers towards low-impact development shows leadership and a concern for the future of our city. To quote a TEC member, "It's not just the environment, it's our life support system." Thank you for the additional time.
Not at all. Thank you for your comments, ma'am. We appreciate them and we appreciate the comments of the P and Z. But I hope you and the P and Z realize that we are the elected council. I'm getting the impression from some things that are going on, and this is not anything to do with you. I'm just having to be, just having to be the last speaker, I guess. And I want to explain that, that it's becoming more adversarial. And they're an advisory council, we're an elected body. They bring the advice to us and that's the end of it. We make the choices. And I have to make that clear because it, it seems to go in, be going in a different direction and it troubles me. So I hope they're listening. I think we're ready for, for a motion.
Well, did, Ms. Rosanka, did you want to reply as the applicant to?
Oh, right.
Let me just also confirm, did you receive copies of the emails that were referred to by council up here today?
Yes, I did. I did. However, I saw that. Thing about trees in those emails, and that's somewhat of a surprise to me. I don't think your code is clear enough on what he needs to do at this stage. And I'm not sure if there's a pending ordinance that I'm under, a pending ordinance doctrine for a new tree preservation ordinance. Because I've been here a number of times, we've talked about it in tree ordinances. So, so I don't know what that is. If you want more information, we can try to get it. But I'll be prepared for your tree ordinance next time. Because I don't think you have enough guidance in your tree ordinance at this stage of the game.
I see no reason why you can't confer with Ms. Busaka.
Oh, certainly, and, and I, I will. I, I just don't know that there's enough guidance as to what you can and cannot consider.
And that's one of the problems. I'm not sure of that either. I mean, it, it seems to be somewhat of a moving target. There's a lot of opinions, but not all of them based on any factual information.
So if you could give us a little direction, if you're tabling it, as to what you would like to see regarding trees when we come back, that would be helpful.
I think we, that's where we, we will attempt to get our staff, attempt to find out some of these answers. And some of these answers are going to be difficult to find, so.
I don't, I'm not even sure I know the questions, but this is what I've heard.
Okay.
I have heard.
Thank you.
What trees are being saved and which trees are being mitigated. More information on stormwater specifically. Is water quality discharge being monitored? I've heard more information on LID best management practices. And I've heard condition of the trees. If anybody else wants any more information than those things, they need to tell me because that's the only thing I've gleaned from the conversation.
The amount of, I'm not sure if you didn't say this, but the amount of gallons that is being purified by the total project as compared to what, I don't know, some suggestions have been well over that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, I, I hear you say purified. But I think I heard Ms. Peggy talk about there is going to be, I call it percolation from the ponds into the Indian River. And no matter what they do, if they put two or three ponds in there, eventually it's going to go into the Indian River. So I guess the question is, we had three conditions on here from P and Z. And she's right, there was no tree thing. The tree came up from us, which is okay because we're council and we can, we can do that. So I think there is a question about what we can do about trees, but we just have to be, make sure we got things in place. If we're going to make them do something, we got to have it based on some ordinance or, or something. We can't just say we want it to be this way.
Oh, I totally agree with you. I want to find out the facts. And there, there are, there are several points of view on how much water has to be purified. I mean, some, as she said, are relatively low. And I don't know that that's the real requirement or not. That's what I want to find out also. And some of them are a lot higher. And they say it's basically a new standard. Well, we don't necessarily have to go under new standards. We got to go with the standards that are here at this point. But they, but they have, they have to meet those standards. So I just would like more facts than we have right, right now. I'm not taking a, a position as to I want to, want them to do it or don't want them to do it. I just want to be fair to them.
Okay. So just to be clear, the three conditions that P and Z had, it sounds like we are more focused on the runoff, correct? As far as the second condition about the 20 feet or five feet, there is no question about that. That, I'm asking a question to make sure she's got it right.
There's no question for me on that. There seems to be a question coming from the members of, of the P and Z. Now, again, we make the final decision.
Right.
But I am interested, at least to hear, you know, what's their, what are they saying? I'm not really sure. They're saying they don't like it or they would prefer more? Or they're saying that it's a, it's something that is absolute to them? That we need more? That's where it's going to be? And I don't agree with that type of thinking certainly. But if it is, I'll, you know, if they're just coming up with these numbers out of the sky, then they mean nothing to me. We have to do with the ordinances that we have.
All right. Okay. And then the last thing, as far as the, the animals. There is no question about that they are looking for a document. And the document is already there because if you've got gopher tortoises or whatever, you're going to have to mitigate those things. So to ask, as a condition to have an additional document, the document is already going to be there. Can I?
Can I, can I, can I add, the document is there. The document itself says you need a gopher turtle survey.
I don't know what she's saying.
Need what? We, we couldn't hear what she's saying.
The environmental study is, is there, it is part of the package. And part of that, that environmental study that the developer furnished says you need a gopher turtle survey.
She said that it's already in there that they needed gopher turtle.
I thought she was asking. I think she was asking that question rather than.
Were you asking or making a statement?
No, I was making a statement. I read the survey and the environmental report. And that is what the environmental report says.
Now, gopher turtles have been under.
Oh, I know.
You know, for years and years and years, as long as I can remember, they have to be mitigated. They have to actually put sticks out there and by the holes to see how many times they're knocked over. So it's, it's a long story.
This is my question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think I'm directing it perhaps to Member Nelson. How are, how is the staff supposed to implement that when the state statute tells us that no, that the municipality may not require as a condition of processing or issuing a development permit or development order, the applicant obtain a permit or approval from the state or federal agency for any type, including this survey for gophers? How are we supposed to deal with what perhaps will be staff.
Wait one second, hold on, everybody hold on. Go ahead, Peggy.
Counsel direction versus state statute? Because that's what we're looking at.
I don't have to repeat that.
Okay. The statute says, 163.0335. For any development permit application filed with the municipality after April 1st, 2012, a municipality may not require as a condition of processing or issuing a development permit, which does include subdivision approval, that an applicant obtain a permit or approval from any state or federal agency unless the agency has issued a final agency action that denies the federal or state permit. So what I'd like to understand is how staff is going to follow that direction based on the state statute.
Well, we're not asking him to obtain a permit. We're saying, your study is saying you need this and we would like to see it. So we're not asking him to go get a permit. We're just saying, hey, this is what your study says. So, per se, this is the information that your study says you need. I think that's my answer. I'm, I'm assuming he's probably going to need it for a permit also. But what we're saying is we would like to see it.
He, he is not required at this point to do that. What he is required to do is when we issue a development permit, the condition number 16 is the issuance of this permit in no way waives the permitting requirements of other local, state, or federal agencies. And that language is taken from the statute. And that, so the statute requires that the issuance of a development permit or development order does not create any right on the part of the applicant to obtain a permit from a state or federal agency and does not create any liability on the part of the municipality for issuance of the permit if the applicant fails to obtain the requisite approvals or fulfill the obligations. In addition to that, it, the requirement from the stat, statute is that we put this disclaimer on our permit, which we do.
Right.
All right, everybody hold on a minute. The city attorney seems to have, did you want to speak?
Actually, I was just going to point out with Ms. Busaka's reading from subsection six of 166033. Subsection five says, "We can't condition our approval on the applicant obtaining permits from other state and federal agencies." So we analyze it under our code for our approval. However, as Ms. Busaka said, issuance of our development permit or order by the city does not create any right on the part of the applicant to obtain permits from state or federal agencies and does not create any liability on the part of the city for issuance of the permit if the applicant fails to get his required approvals from those agencies. Also, it states that, "The city shall attach such a disclaimer to the issuance of a development permit and shall include a permit condition that all other applicable state or federal permits be obtained before commencement of the development." So what it says is you don't condition your approval on them obtaining those permits. But also, our permit is going to have a disclaimer that they cannot begin construction until they receive those permits. So you may issue a development permit or order that approves the development, but they are not allowed to actually begin construction until they obtain all other permits.
I think that answers the question. And, and I know for years and years that scrub jays and gopher turtles, they, any construction in an area where they are, could be present or were found to be present, they had to do a study on it and find out, you know, how many were there and so forth, and then mitigate it if, if they found them. So I think what you just said is how it happens. I mean.
I understand that. I, I'm just saying.
Yeah, well, it's, but.
Ask Richard this, just for my clarification. And it's not something that I necessarily want to hang projects up on. However, Richard, isn't it true though, it doesn't say that we can't ask for a study that has been suggested by their expert?
No.
Not having anything to do with the permit?
We're having a hard time understanding if, is there some, something you can do to clear it up? It's very muffled.
No, it's, it's been muffled all my, Richard. So if a, if a physician or expert says you need to get A, and we ask for A, not as a condition of a permit or anything else, we ask to see the additional information. That's not, that would not be illegal at that point, correct?
I, I think I know what you're saying. Are you saying that we can't require a permit, but we can require a study? That would be.
Correct.
Okay. I don't understand how we do that when the study is precedent to the permit and would only be required based on the permit, need for a permit. So I think it would be the same as saying, perhaps, we're not going to make you get a driver's license, but we're going to make you take the test.
Correct, correct.
And I don't understand, the need for the test would be because you're going to pass and get a driver's license. So I don't understand why a report would be necessary, except we could ask, we could, but if the developer comes back and says no, then what is staff supposed to do? Are we supposed to tell you that we've said no? Are we supposed to tell you that? That's my question is, we can ask anything, but what, how is staff going to know when we've checked the box?
Can, I'm going to jump in here. I have, I have a question, I'm going to jump in. Hold on. Again, I know that this has been done over and over and over again where these searches for scrub jays and, and, and you need a permit for them and the relocation of gopher turtles. So there's an answer out there somewhere because those developers wouldn't have done it if they didn't have to.
Typically, they don't do it at Sketch Plat because they, they're trying to spend the littlest amount of money now until they know they've got the green light to move forward.
And I'm, my problem isn't when they do it, it's that they have to do it at some point in time.
And I was saying, this is not a real breaker.
He's an attorney. You have, you have to let us talk down here too, please. Hold on one second. This is very hard to do with people, you know, the way we're doing it. So please be patient. Attorney?
Just following what you just said is that at some point they have to do it. That's correct. If you do approve a development order or development permit as required by the state statute we just read, we have to attach a statement to the issuance of that permit or order that has a condition that they must meet all other state and federal permits and obtain them before they can actually commence any development on that site.
I, I, I think that's the answer to my question, yes. And I think if you, Ms. Busaka will look into that, I think you'll find that's the answer to your question. I know, this is not an argument, I'm, I'm just trying to help. Go ahead, go ahead now. Member Nelson, go ahead.
I'm just saying, you ask and he says no, okay. We make a decision on what information we have.
Mr. Mayor?
Bobby.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think we are arguing something that I agree with you. It's, it's going to happen. But the question is about the sketch plan, Sketch Plat here. And we've got three conditions here. And that third one is what we're arguing about. And we're arguing about whether we're going to have. And we're arguing about whether we're going to have this proof of looking at gopher tortoises and everything. It is not a requirement to have that at this time. The developer's not going to spend their money on this until it's time for them to get a permit. Right? So, but what I'm saying is, but we've got these three conditional, and I'm trying to argue that one should not be on there, because this is not the time for it to be there.
But I think what I heard is it has to be on there so that it can be brought forward later.
No. Yeah, it'll be brought forward.
It will be brought forward later?
It has to be.
In order to get the permits.
Yeah. But don't we have to put in there? Well, you did, that was what he read, that it has to...
It doesn't have to be a condition of the Sketch Flat.
Well, I'm not...
It's a state requirement.
The attorney.
The comprehensive plan, the code may require additional information with regard to the environmental study being provided, things of that nature. I'm not discussing that. Certainly, staff can discuss with you what our comp plan and codes require as far as environmental information to be provided and reviewed as part of the site plan. My point is that with regard to requiring proof of protection, and I just wanted to let you know in the statute that we cannot condition our approval on them obtaining other permits. That is part of the development order that says you shall not commence development till you obtain those other permits. But there may be other environmental information that is required.
All I'm saying is, as I think you have said, there is a process, though, at a later point, to say you have to go out and do that.
Yes, there is a process.
That's all I'm saying, that somewhere in there is a process, and as long as we have that there, at that point in time, they don't have to do it now, I don't care whether they do it now, but somewhere in time, you know, before they start, we say you don't build unless you do it. And that's already there, because I can't imagine how many builders I know that complained about scrub jays and gopher tortoises, and none of them would have done it if there wasn't something proviso that says you have to.
Right, and as I said, this only discusses conditions that are required as part of an approval. There may be other information that is required as far as environmental studies and information that is part of the site planning process, part of the plating process through the city that they will have to provide. They will have to meet those codes.
Okay, well, again, I think we all want the same thing, and I think the conclusion I come to is there is a process to do it. Ms. Zanka, you can research that as well. As far as I'm concerned, it is mandatory. However the methodology is, I don't know what it is, but I know it's there. Anyone else wish to speak?
Please, no.
I hear nobody? All right.
Mayor, can I just add one last thing?
Say again? Okay, you're recognized. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you. I spoke up and have concerns about us having some idea of how much and what kind of water is going into the lagoon. I definitely feel like we're making a nice move on trees, but as I listen more, I want to make sure that at least from my perspective, we're not moving the target on the developer. You know, listening to her speak, and I think she makes some valid points, as I recall the previous meetings, you know, they've made some moves toward doing the right things, they've jumped some hoops, and don't misunderstand me, we've got to do our part with the lagoon and trees and turtles and all that, but I think we've got to be careful about having a set of hoops one meeting, and then a year later when they come back, we maybe added some or moved them around. So, just a thought.
Well, my recommendation is to table this to a date certain, so that we can get through some of these questions.
Absolutely agree.
Okay, does somebody want to make that?
I would make the motion, but I think we need some guidance from Peggy as to a date. I would move to table it, but I think I need a date from Peggy of when she thinks it would be appropriate.
First of all, this has not been advertised, it's on new business, so it doesn't have to be tabled to a date certain, does it? I don't think so. But I guess what I was suggesting is that I don't know how long it would take, for instance, to ask for some of this information from the developer. The deadline for the next agenda, I believe, is Monday, and this is Wednesday. So, we need, you can't just turn these things around like instantaneously, especially if you're asking for things like reports that may or may not have ever been developed, you want staff to review LID best management practices, this may take some kind of work from an arborist to go out and look at the condition of the trees. So I would like to say, let us work to get this information back to you as quickly as we can. I'm sure that the applicant is motivated to do that, and we'll just bring it back to you as soon as we've got the information gathered.
Ms. Zanka, do you want to?
That's the best idea I've got, maybe. Ms. Zanka's got a better one.
Would you come to the microphone, please? Any additional input you'd like to put in?
I have to review your code. I think you're putting burdens on the developer than on your code, and that's the aspect that I need to look at as well. You're not going to get an arborist out there in any fashion quickly, so...
We have an arborist.
Okay, maybe you guys do, but he's going to have to get an arborist out there as well.
All I care is what arborist...
All right, well, then, I don't know how long your arborist would take. That, to me, is the only issue. The rest of them I can deal with in a short fashion. The tree issue is my concern, and I don't know where your arborist...
Do you need a date certain, or are you satisfied with Ms. Busaka will get it back as soon as possible and advertise it and so forth?
I trust that Ms. Busaka will get it back timely, so I just, I just don't, I don't have a client here to tell me exactly what to do, so I like to keep moving things along, but I do trust that Ms. Busaka will do everything she can to do what you've asked.
I think that's a wise decision.
Yes, thank you.
Now, does somebody like to make a motion?
So then, my motion would be to table Burke Landing subdivision Sketch Flat.
Did anybody get that? Because I didn't. She wants one?
It's a motion to table.
Wants, motion to table, and, 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 how do you word it, that you will get it back as soon as possible? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, he gets it directly. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Well, that was easy. Thank you all. Ms. Busaka, thank you particularly. Okay. Where the heck are we? I think we're in the city manager's report, aren't we? No, we got one more? Any other cards on petitions and requests?
We have no cards, and the only individual left in the room spoke under the first petition, so...
You can't speak again, I'm sorry. Okay. So, we've done that, we've done petitions and requests, now, mayor, may I still report? That's where I was. You have my report, and if anybody has any questions, I can ask them, but other than that, it's pretty simple. Next. Council reports. Any members of council have a report to make? I hear none. Next is the city manager's report.
Yes, sir, and council have no action items for your consideration, and one update on the student advisory council, and your budget workshop dates, along with the public hearings.
Very good, thank you, sir. City attorney, do you have a report? Is there anything else anybody would like to speak about for the good of the order? I hear none. Hit the gavel, the meeting is adjourned.